Good evening, everyone. Welcome. And I call this June 20th, 23 Hybrid Administrative Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to Order. Commissioner Barboa and Commissioner Benson will be joining remotely. I'd like, please have a moment of silence, followed by a pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Kassada.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Kassada. Item three announcements. Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Yes, we have a few changes. The first one is Item 3A, National Safety Month Acknowledgement to be added to the agenda as Item 4B. The next is Procurement and Business Services Amendment to Burnaleo County Procurement Ordinance to be added to agenda as Item 7A. The next is Parks and Recreation. Burnaleo County Parks and Recreation and Open Space Facility Use and Fee Policy to be deferred to a future meeting. And lastly, Item 8B, BCSO Bodyworn Camera Item to be moved up on the agenda to be heard before consent. And Madam Chair, a vote is required for the changes that I just mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other changes? And so we will have a roll call vote. I'm not sure if Commissioner Barboa is on yet, but we'll just do the roll call vote and find out.
It's just the three of you right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Julie, do I call all names even though it's just the three of them?
Yes.
All ready? Chair Barbara Barbo- Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa. Commissioner Kassada.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson. Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
So called.
Thank you. Before we move on to proclamations, I offer the following statement regarding a closed litigation meeting held this Tuesday, June 20th, 2023 at 3:30. Only those items described on the published notice and agenda for the closed meeting held today, June 20th, 2023, were discussed at the closed meeting. And I need a motion for approval of this statement, and it will become part of the minutes of this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and we'll do a roll call vote.
Chair Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Commissioner Kassada.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson. Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
So called. And that passes. Second closed meeting statement. I move that the Burnaleo County Attorney and County Manager be authorized to proceed with the matters discussed in the closed meeting held on Tuesday, June 20th, 2023, within the parameters set by this commission to include negotiating and accepting the proposed settlement stipulated order addressing medical care at the Metropolitan Detention Center. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please, Madam Chair.
Chair Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa. Commissioner Kassada.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson. Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
So called.
Thank you. Agenda item four, proclamations. County Manager Julie Morges Baca, very important proclamation. We've got a dear employee of ours named Clay Campbell, so we're going to ask you to stand up, Clay.
Thank you. Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you so much for just having the opportunity to acknowledge my Chief of Staff, Clay Campbell. So as many of you may know, Clay will be retiring of July, the end of July, and so we want to present this acknowledgement to him. So acknowledging Clay Campbell joined Burnaleo County in June of 1999 as a Parks Planner for the Parks and Recreation Department under the Community Services Division. Since then, he has held critical roles within the county and set the bar for an executive professional, serving as a catalyst for the enrichment of services for the residents of Burnaleo County. And acknowledging he is the, he is ending his career with Burnaleo County as the Chief of Staff to the County Manager as he prepares to retire after 24 years of loyal, dedicated, and impeccable service. And acknowledging Clay has reached retirement as an achievement he has very much earned, those who know Clay and had had the privilege of working with him have experienced his passion, tenacity, enthusiasm, wit, and intelligence. And acknowledging Clay executed his duties as Chief of Staff with integrity, impartiality, and competency gained from his extensive government experience and his work ethic and common sense are a testament to his success. And acknowledging Clay has maintained a steadfast commitment to the county's elected officials, staff, and the citizens of Burnaleo County, and he has made a significant difference. And acknowledging words can neither quantify nor qualify how noteworthy Clay's contribution has been to Burnaleo County. His legacy will continue to be the inspiration for years to come. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Board of County Commissioners extends its deep appreciation for Clay's dedication, professionalism, and outstanding service to Burnaleo County. He will be missed. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to say that this is, this is a bittersweet for me personally. I've known Clay since 2004, and we worked together when I was a Deputy County Manager and he was a Parks Planner, and we worked so well together on, on a lot of parks initiatives. I know I walked this morning to the Bickeke Open Space, and that was one of our first projects that we worked on together. And I just got to know Clay, and then when I, then I retired, and then I came back. I'm so happy that I did. I came back to be the County Manager, and I asked Clay if he would work with me. And I think that's the best decision I made, because I will say this to anybody, hands down, he has made me a better County Manager and a better person. And I am honored and humbled to work with him. He's been my right hand, my left hand. I could call on him anytime. He stopped me from doing some crazy things a lot of the times. I think you guys know what, what I mean. I can get really passionate about things. And so, I mean, we all love what we do, but Clay always made sure that we were all honest, that we were ethical, that we didn't skip a beat. And when I say we, I mean the county, because he loves the county and he cares about his community. Mary, I just want to say thank you for sharing us with Clay, sharing Clay with us. Thank you. And thank, I want to thank his family. You all are amazing people, and I just couldn't wish better things for you. I want you to enjoy your, your beautiful wife, your, your children, your grandchildren. And I know you're going to be going on vacation pretty soon with your beautiful bride, and we wish you the best. And you're going to be having a lot of fun, I know, pursuing your outdoor activities and just all the awesome things that you've done. So thank you so much, Clay. And would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you. Well, thank you. I'm, I'm blown away. I'm humbled. I'm grateful for this proclamation and the recognition from you all. I have been genuflecting quite a bit about the last 25 years, and there's so many things from early on I can remember just with crystal clarity. So it's kind of, kind of wild and very surreal. There's a lot of past Commissioners, past coworkers, supervisors, managers, too many to name that I want to thank for allowing me to contribute, lead, and help improve. And along the way, my domestic front here, my wife, Mary, right there, my daughter Kate, our son Turner, who's in the Pacific Northwest and isn't here, my son-in-law Andrew, my granddaughter Lily, and my granddaughter Emma here are my, are my rock at home. I am very proud of the initiatives and the projects that I've been involved with since 1999 and, and the things that have become successful through collaboration, whether it was Park and Open Space Properties, the Open Space Program, rebuilding the Capital Improvement Program, as well as the numerous initiatives and efforts under County Manager Morges Baca's leadership. I'm proud of it all. So a big thank you to the current commission, my current coworkers and colleagues in the audience, Deputy County Managers, Department Directors, program level, and administrative staff for all of your support, trust, and collaboration. But in particular, to County Manager Julie Morges Baca, who has showed a tremendous amount of faith in me and confidence in me that I can never repay back. And she is a remarkable and authentic leader. And all county staff and the public and you all, we should all be very grateful that we have her. So thank you very much for this recognition, and I do appreciate Burnaleo County and my time here. Thank you.
Thank you, Clay. I wanted to say a couple of words to Clay, because I'm sorry, everybody's giving you a standing ovation. But in the eighties, I worked with Clay. He was in the private sector when I was with city open space, and we did, and city recreation planning, and we did a fantastic recreation needs assessment for the youth of our community at the time. And we won in-
A national award.
American Planning Association Award for that work, and that was because of our partnership. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Very much.
Yeah, Clay, you're, you're an amazing human being. I think I couldn't say any more than the great things that have been said about you. But what I loved more about you is that you're kind and that you care and, and you respect people. And, you know, in, in a, in a time where that's so far and few in between people these days, your, your breath of fresh air. I'm honored to have worked with you and, and to just to meet you as a human being. And I want to wish you all the luck on your retirement, and I want you to enjoy your life because, dude, you totally earned it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Olivas has a word for you too, Clay.
I'm, I'm, Madam Chair, thank you. I'm probably the least qualified person up here to, to speak to what a great person and what a great leader you are here at the county. I've only had the opportunity to serve with you for, you know, a short number of months. But from the moment I, I met you and first spoke to you, I think in December, November, something like that, as, as we made the transition, you have just been nothing but competent is, is an understatement and just so deserving of, of your title and your job and the trust that's placed in you. You are the definition of a public servant. And I think we are all going to miss you. And it, and it speaks to the County Manager's leadership for, for putting you in the, in the position that you're in to make the impact that you've had across this county, across Commissioners. And I'm just very grateful for the amount of time that I've had to serve with you and get to know you and get to know the way that you operate. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Again, County Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. So during the month of June, Burnaleo County encourages all employees to participate in raising their awareness in the practice of safe and healthy behaviors in all aspects of their lives. A preventable injury-related death occurs every two minutes in the United States, and more than 24.8 million Americans visit an emergency room for unintentional injuries. The goal of Burnaleo County Safety Professionals is to raise public awareness and seek opportunities to educate county employees about these alarming and preventable mishaps through training, education, and awareness. Through the support and observance of the National Safety Month, the goal of Burnaleo County is to help reverse the increase in accidental injuries and deaths, in addition to ensuring countywide safe facility working conditions. Burnaleo County supports national safety efforts and has taken a proactive stance in providing a safe and healthy work environment for its employees. Burnaleo County's Risk Management Department and the Burnaleo County Safety Committee work collaboratively on a safety, on safety prevention measures, reviewing work-related injuries, accidents, as well as facility inspections to improve work safety and reduce losses. Burnaleo County works to ensure the safety of all county employees by setting policy and enforcing standards, providing training, and encouraging continual improvement in workplace safety and health. Gina Ortega, I want to thank you for being an amazing Risk Management Director, for keeping us out of trouble. And I know your job isn't easy. Lisa Sadio White, I want to thank you for your leadership and this, just the, all the work that the work, the employees and the Risk Management staff do. I know, like I said, I know it's not easy. You are like the police. We're, yeah, so you are. You're like, you know, you're like the Sheriff's Department for the, an extension of them for the county, because you've got to, you know, you've got to keep us out of trouble. You have to keep us safe, and we appreciate you all. So would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, elected officials, and Madam County Manager, first, I want to say thank you so much for supporting us in this. I know that when you talk about safety, it's such a cliche, but for me, it's a whole other note level, another level. My dad was a loss control and safety manager for over 30 years, so it's something that's instilled in me. But with regard to Burnaleo County, my goal, myself, with Risk- But with regard to Burnley County, my goal, myself, with risk management and my safety team, I don't know where they went, but our goal is to ensure our employees are safe. We're creating an environment where we're changing the culture, ensuring that we're working with them, ensuring that we're giving them the training, education, and the tools that is necessary to come home, to come to work and go home safely. This last year has been very hard. We did have a huge loss and that's given us another set of eyes of what we need to look at and look at preventative measures. But I just want to say thank you because we are continuing to change our safety culture. We will continue to work with all of our employees countywide to make sure that we are in one piece and we are working to support them in any way that we can. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. You want to get a quick pic?
Yes.
Thanks a lot. Before we go on to public comment, we will hear communications items 5A and 5B first. So, 5A, let's see, Official of Criminal Justice and Behavioral Health Initiatives. The ATAB Chair Dr. Rifka Stern and Vice Chair Dr. Barbara McGrady to present.
Thank you, Madam Chair, County Commissioners, elected officials, and anyone else I'm supposed to be thanking right now. I'm Dr. Rifka Stern. I'm a family doctor here in town and I've been here for 30 years. I've also been working in addiction medicine for the last 15 years. And I'm chairperson of the Addiction Treatment Advisory Board to Burnley County. This is my colleague.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you. I'm Dr. Barbara McGrady. I'm a clinical psychologist by training and a distinguished professor, emerita, and working retiree at the University of New Mexico. And I've been a clinician, researcher, and educator in the addictions field for almost 50 years. We both want to thank you all for giving us this opportunity to present some of the major parts of our report that we submitted to the board. So, I'm going to first start with some of the accomplishments that we've wanted to focus on for the last year. It's been a very productive year. We've spent a lot of time and discussion and providing input, particularly about two major areas, the Metropolitan Detention Center and the major concerns that have been there in terms of patient health or inmate health in terms of addictions, as well as the care campus. And we've been really happy to see a lot of progress in both of those areas and we'd like to think a little bit because of our input. We've also contributed a lot to county and city planning efforts related to addictions and addiction services, particularly talking about the medical sobering unit and the fentanyl awareness day and the continuing activities that will be coming from that. And finally, we developed a standard of care for the treatment of alcohol use disorder and we updated the standard of care for the treatment of opioid use disorder to include additional information about fentanyl.
Thanks. We did give you all our overall written report, including the standards of care for alcohol and opiates and the updating fentanyl. So, if you have any questions, feel free to ask us about any parts of that report. Our recommendations to the county commission are concerns about the multiple fatalities that appear to be at MDC that appear to be related to withdrawals, either alcohol or other drug withdrawals. And so, we have been giving recommendations for appropriate and evidence-based withdrawal management. We are, feel very strongly that evidence-based methods should be used at MDC and in a very timely manner because people can get very ill very quickly if they are in withdrawal. So, again, we just want to emphasize the importance of that to help prevent, you know, unnecessary deaths. We also, one of our accomplishments last year is that the using buprenorphine for addiction treatment was started at the jail. Methadone has been available at the jail for a long time, but buprenorphine or suboxone hasn't. That got started. It's been very successful. And we want to make sure that the funding is available, continually available for that program. There were lots of people who are already in treatment on suboxone and suboxone or buprenorphine is also used for withdrawal management. So, we want to make sure if people are staying as in jail, that they have the appropriate evidence-based treatment for medication management. So, that's one of our recommendations. There are also other needs and services that have been identified over the years, gaps in services for the county, city, state. You know, nothing we're talking about here is specific to the county. One thing we don't have is a youth detoxification center. Serenity Mesa is, gets a lot of support from the county and it provides a rehab space, but there's nobody specifically in the whole state doing medical detox for youths, but particularly younger kids, 14 to 18 years old. So, the Director of Serenity Mesa really wants to get this started. She has a building, she has some funding, but we would encourage the county to do whatever they could to help support getting this program up and running. We feel this is a very urgent need right now. And there's, you know, it's already been started. We also think that we need increased resources for unhoused and precariously housed people who have addictions. It's hard to get treatment if they don't have housing and to be steady with it. Transportation is also an issue. So, we think those are important things to concentrate on. And there is a need to have a more stable treatment resource, probably program inpatient, kind of like a rehab for women who are pregnant. I mean, we have the Milagro program that can give them medications for addiction, but it doesn't give, help them be in a therapeutic setting, which is needed. So, pregnant women, you know, newly postpartum women, women with young children who need a safe place to be to help manage their addiction so that they can be successful. You know, all of these need to be done in collaboration with the City of Albuquerque, State of New Mexico, UNM, you know, all of our other partners. But we think these are very important.
As I mentioned in describing our accomplishments, we did develop, we have two standards of care for treatment for persons with alcohol use disorder and with opioid use disorder. And we would like the county commissioners to approve their implementation in county programs as a formal approval that will really facilitate the implementation and use of those standards of care in programs throughout the county. And finally?
And finally, we would like to, we ask that ATAB be represented in major addiction-related county planning initiatives. So, we're here, open to questions.
Thank you, Dr. Stern, Dr. McGrady. Any questions for the doctors? Thank you for all your good work.
I do, if I can.
Commissioner Barbo, you are here. Vice Chair Barbo, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. And, yeah, thank you for so much of your time. Sorry I was late, everybody. And I joined in when y'all were taking pictures in the last, well, actually at the end of that great accomplishment. I'm sorry I wasn't there. But to this, I just want to make sure that Dr. Stern, Dr. McGrady, thank you. In a world where we are lacking for healthcare providers all over, I know you all are picking up so much work and you still volunteer your time, your skills, your expertise to serve on ATAB board because you care so much. So, thank you so much for your passion and for this work. I was on those calls when you were talking about the standard of care. I want folks to understand that this is the path towards being able to save lives. I was there when, you know, when MDC was sort of like, this was, you know, months ago, but MDC was like, well, we've, you know, we can't, you know, administer on the weekends. If we get somebody on a Friday and we can't get ahold of their provider, then we can't administer, even if they've already been on suboxone or buprenorphine, we can administer it because we don't have a way to contact their provider. And you all came in with a quick solution. And that's what I believe these, that's why these partnerships are so important and having you all to volunteer again, your time and expertise to just share and troubleshoot. We're learning that these things are changing every day. There's new technology in the field and new ways to address every day and new medicine. And so, I just want to make sure that folks understand how important your contributions and this work and supporting those standards of care so that we can always be doing better. And I just, I think I would, the one question I would like to ask, you said for two, you made two standards of care and two for alcohol and two standards of care for opioid. Why are there two? Are they different for some particular, I just want to understand it?
I think there was a misunderstanding. There is one standard of care that we developed for alcohol use. There's a separate one that had been developed in 2018, updated in 2019, but that was before fentanyl. And so, we just added an addendum to help, again, if providers or other people have questions about fentanyl and why that's different than how we had been treating heroin or prescription pill addiction. So, we were adding that to the opioid standards of care. So, there's one for alcohol and one for opiates.
Let me just add that what was in the report was a draft of the fentanyl addendum to the opioid use standard of care. And we've since met with the whole Addiction Treatment Advisory Board and have made some additions and corrections to that. So, we'll provide that to the Commissioners. And thank you, Commissioner Barbo, for all your support for what we're doing. We really, really appreciate it.
No, and no, thank you all. And I just want to follow up to that. I did, I mean, I guess because I'm on a lot of these calls, I also heard, you mentioned Serenity Mesa, and I had heard in one of the conversations that there's a lot between, like, I guess it's like hearing what's going on in real time that's so important is because there's a lot of folks that aren't taking one of the drugs because it doesn't make them feel good and, but that paired with another, which I'm assuming is in your standard of care, can help, can help both incentivize, you know, getting mats. And is that true, what I'm assuming there?
We don't have very specific protocols set out, partly because there isn't anything evidence-based that's been approved for treating fentanyl withdrawal. But all of us working in the community are finding ways and so, we do have options. And again, anyone that they hire, we're just expecting them to be as up to date as they can on how to manage the initial withdrawals before they can get started on buprenorphine.
Thank you so much.
And I just want to add, medication is a really important part of treatment for any addiction, but medications plus rehabilitative, other rehabilitative activities are really where we get the best results. So, just medication alone is not sufficient to help somebody recover.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGrady.
Thank you. Last time, sorry, Chair, if I could add one.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm not there, so it's hard for me to tell where. I just wanted to add and thank again, thank these two and then the whole ATAB board. I know you work so hard, but I'm just amazed to see how you're, not amazed, not really surprised because excellence just continues, but to see how aligned your report is with the Behavioral Health Working Group reports, you know, prioritizing treatment, youth detox and housing as major priorities. It's just so aligned with what we've seen come out of that Behavioral Health Working Group. I'm not surprised. And again, just thank you for sharing, but it's good to validate it in multiple ways so we can move forward with some good plans. So, thank you again. That's my last, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Barbo. Commissioner Casala.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make a comment that I am directing, you know, a large portion of my ARPA funds to Serenity Mesa. They reach out to me all the time. And when I'm done here as a commissioner, I'm going to make a commitment as a known person in this community to continue to raise money for Serenity Mesa. I find it a priority to me. A lot of people know my background isn't just comedy and acting, but that I've worked really hard with gang intervention and using and working with YDI. And so, my direction has always been helping these kids at that age group, you know, initially to navigate out of gangs and to find opportunities to move themselves into the future. But now, with what we're dealing with as a community, to really back up, I think, one of the only providers that are really looking at youth in this, in this way. And so, I just wanted to let you know that I got money coming their way from my, from my ARPA funds and that I am making a commitment here publicly and I have to them, that I'm going to support them moving on in the future to make sure that we're always raising money for somebody who's doing the work that nobody else is doing.
That's right. And that's what they've been doing.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you both for all your work. We'll now move on to item 5B, Parks and Recreation and Open Space Integrated Vegetation Management and Maintenance Plan. John Barney and George Radnovich.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. It's my pleasure to introduce George Radnovich. Mr. Radnovich is our consultant for putting together the Integrated Vegetation Maintenance and Management Plan. And this is something that actually we committed to do as part of the resolution back in 2019 that at some point our consultants would come back and report on this, on this effort to research what's going on in other parts of the country and also look at our effort and kind of what the needs are specifically to our land management group here. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to George and thank you for your attention.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Radnovich.
Thank you, John. I have a little handout if I can just bring it up to you. And this is what I'll be presenting, but I thought you might want to see the numbers because I'll blizzard them. I don't know where it is. It's right here. Oh, up there. Thanks, John. So, we can get it. There it goes. Appreciate it. Perfect. Okay. Thanks, John. So, as John said, my name's George Radnovich. I'm a landscape architect and a planner. Been working around water conservation and alternatives to high water and more regional approach to landscaping for many years. I know many of you. And I'm going to try to keep this to about 10 minutes, which is one of the reasons why I gave you copies of the presentation because I'm going to kind of go through some of them a little more quickly than others. This is an update, as we said we would provide you. The reason it's taken so long is we had something go on a few years ago called a pandemic and that's
and that's, that's kind of changed the way we've, we've changed the timeline that we had set aside. Back in the 60s, Albuquerque and a lot of other southwestern cities started doing landscaping a little bit differently and using more gravel as a ground cover, not as landscape per se. Back in 74, Monsanto designed and invented glyphosate, among other things. As you probably know, they went bankrupt a few years ago and Bayer Corporation took over the, the use of glyphosate and sales of it. Between 2018 and 2020, there were hundreds of lawsuits, actually thousands of lawsuits, and Bayer paid $10.9 million to the complainants in those lawsuits. Burnley County in 2018, and then in 2019, developed a draft and then a final ban on glyphosate. And then today, I'm here to give you an update on the efforts we've been expending trying to understand where Burnley County is in glyphosate's use. We've, we've done quite a few tasks. Some are yet to occur, and these are all of the tasks that we had set before us. I just wanted to have this available to you. I'm not going to get into great detail on this, but suffice it to say, there's still more work to be done. This is a very important slide. We, we did peer city reviews for almost all of these cities. And as you can see, only two have glyphosate bans right now. Some of them actually had banned glyphosate and then backed up and made them pilot programs and modified the way they looked at the use of glyphosate because they just couldn't keep up with all that gravel we started putting in, in the 70s. You'll notice at the very bottom, those are just a few of the cities that have not touched glyphosate in any way, in terms of a ban or even a pilot program. The only two that we're aware of in the Southwest that do still have glyphosate bans are Austin and Las Cruces. And you'll note the date on Las Cruces' ban. That was last year. They haven't learned what we've learned in our, in our, in our work and what other cities who did have a ban, like our friends in Santa Fe and our friends in Tucson, before, and Boulder, actually, Colorado, before this time. So a lot of cities banned initially glyphosate and then retracted, rescinded those bans after a few years of trying to keep up with landscapes. These are preliminary findings for the report, and I, I want to emphasize that it's just preliminary. But industry-wide, people are trying to really figure out how glyphosate affects people. I should say government is trying to figure out how glyphosate affects people and, for that matter, how to deal with the lack of glyphosate. There are parts of the world that have banned glyphosate indefinitely, but many of those parts of the world don't have what we call, or started calling, zerescapes a few years ago, which use a lot of gravel. The, the, and I can't read that too well, so I'm going to pick up my notes, excuse I think there needs to be broader engagement with the green industry about glyphosate here in Burnley County, and we need to work harder with peer agencies. We did initially have a stakeholder group that we worked with or tried to work with. And to be perfectly honest, some of those stakeholders just didn't want to talk about it. The city of Albuquerque never attended one of our meetings because they don't want to deal with glyphosate. And some of the other peer agencies like Sandia Labs also didn't want to deal with it. So quite a bit of pushback we've experienced and seen in terms of the use of glyphosate. We think there may be a need for a manager for not just glyphosate, but all chemical herbicides that are in use. We think we need to be very proactive about the, the groups of people that are calling Burnley County Land Management and Parks and Recreation about this. I think we need to be flexible in the future and we need to create new paradigms for what landscapes really should be in terms of county parks and recreation. This is a slide that shows kind of the implications to land management. And you'll see that the alternatives to glyphosate at the bottom there have a little skull and crossbones in front of one of those, one of those warnings. The, the chemicals that are being used to replace glyphosate aren't any safer. As a matter of fact, they could be worse. And so glyphosate's just the one that's taking the brunt of the press, I'll say, the bad press, about using chemicals. The county has worked on alternatives. We've even set aside open spaces that were put in place just to experiment with organics and other chemicals. But most of the alternatives are pretty hazardous, hazardous themselves. Some of them are flammable. Some of them have more hazardous implications than glyphosate on your great staff at land management. And so, and some, which were recommended to us by the steering committee, aren't legal in New Mexico. The state of New Mexico has to approve everything that can be used as an herbicide in the state, and many, many have not been approved, so we, we cannot use them. But they're getting daily calls for herbicides. And you can see from looking at the difference in that chart on the, I think I have a pointer, but that chart over, yeah, I can't point to it. The chart on the, on the bottom right shows the, the increase in costs just from using different kinds of herbicides and organic herbicides for a replacement for glyphosate. This is a pretty interesting slide. Parks and Recreation does not use, and this is really a prior to ban kind of slide, they were using glyphosate on just a few types of landscaping. As you can, as you can imagine, turf and sports fields, it wasn't used at all except for around the edges. It was very, very minimal use of glyphosate. The main culprits that need glyphosate are the second one and the fourth one on that list. And the second one is zerescapes. And zerescape got really kind of mangled in the way that we looked at them. They, they really weren't originally planned to be gravelscapes. And there's a lot of gravelscapes around the whole metropolitan area. But you can see that they're about 20%, approximately 20% of the total land area of Parks and Recreation projects and facilities. The other one that needs glyphosate more, or something like it, more than other facilities is hardscape. That's the county courthouse. That's this building. Those, those cracks in the pavement, it's really difficult for land management to erase those weeds that grow up in, grow up in those cracks. So we have some ideas for that, but those are the two areas that are, are really essential for some kind of weed management beyond just pulling weeds or using a flame torch. Oh, I wanted to also point out that, that landscape on the bottom is Tom T. Park. It's Tom Tenorio Park. You can see the park itself, and the sports fields are green and you can't use glyphosate on those. Look at all those areas around them. All they are are gravel with trees every 30 feet. You can't, barely see the trees. The rest is just gravel. And for land management to try to keep weeds under control in those areas is very, very difficult. And there's just really no way to deal with it other than hand-pulling. They can't use, according to OSHA, the flamethrowers they were using back in the 60s and 70s. And it's, it literally comes down to manpower, which, which we don't have. This shows the amount of calls that land management has been getting for weed control. And this doesn't include, this only includes the call center. When one of you, for instance, calls about a constituent that might have a problem with weeds somewhere in the facilities of Parks and Recreation, they aren't even listed on this. But you can see the two I underlined in the, in terms of the employee hours being used, and you can see just to the left of those, the calls that we're getting has increased dramatically. They're, they being land management are using almost double what they were using in terms of person hours and man hours out in the field to deal with weeds. And again, this doesn't, doesn't even show anything that didn't come through the call center. So they're having a very difficult time keeping up with the amount of weeds and weed control that are being requested by citizens. And, you know, I think, I think that, I just wanted to say that I think there are other ways to control weeds, and I'll go into that, but the, the use of, of something like glyphosate or glyphosate itself is, is going to be important in the future because they just, they just can't keep up with, with the amount of calls they're, they're getting and the amount of weed control they need to do. This slide shows what land management has done since the ban. They've added staff and equipment. You may remember that about two years ago, land management was given $15 million to add more staff. They did, and they, and, and that translated to 15 additional employees. Thanks, John. And it's just not enough. It's still not enough. They have been researching in the Marble Open Space up near Uptown. They have been researching other kinds of chemicals, other types of treatments. They're just not being able to keep up. They did add a frequently asked questions slide to the county website, and that's getting, getting some of the education out there, but they really need to increase their education budget of the public so the public understands what's happening in terms of weed control. They've had increases in terms of equipment. They have increases in terms of non-glyphosate-based chemicals, and the budget implications due to these increased costs are also being applied to training for staff so they understand the differences in how they maintain landscapes that no longer have glyphosate or a chemical like them to use, which is safe, safer than some of the ones they're already using. These are our preliminary recommendations for your consideration. One is to optimize all levels of sustainability from the use of zerescape to green stormwater infrastructure and embrace energy and material conservation as well. Another is not to eliminate, not to eliminate the use of herbicides totally, but include them on a case-by-case basis so that they can keep up. The other is we think there ought to be a phased capital improvements program. The first phase of which would be to develop a new paradigm for new projects going out there that have weed control at a higher level in terms of how they're designed, how they're installed, and how they're maintained. And then the other is to convert other gravel landscapes that are out there to a more naturalistic approach to landscaping that doesn't need the weed control that we use now. Public education is essential. People don't really understand what the difference is between weeds and, and native plant landscaping. And, you know, a weed is really, it's, it's, it's just a plant that is sort of out of place, given the, the design that's, that's been put in place. So training is really important. Also, staff is really proud of the certificates that they have to use weed control. And I think we need to have something to put into its place because staff morale is very low right now in terms of trying to keep up with this and feeling proud of what they do. And I, I think that's important for all of our jobs, and it's important for your, for your land management staff too. So there may be some new certifications that could be developed, like a nature scape manager, and I just made these up, but a turf grass sustainability manager or a master of sustainable herbicide application. They need training in those areas and certifications to kind of take the place of some of the certifications that are out there now that they're losing because they, they don't have the ability to use some of the herbicides they've had, they've had in the past. We're also recommending that we restart the stakeholder and steering committee meetings. Maybe instead of getting, for instance, the city of Albuquerque to be part of the stakeholder group or the, or Sandia National Labs, maybe we get private sector individuals that are experts in what they do to, to help us work through this and, and have a better understanding of what this really means. Because, you know, most of the sister agencies in the region just aren't banning or even touching glyphosate as a, as an issue. Also to change the paradigm for parkland design, I mentioned that before, and this is your old facility at the bottom of this slide. This is Union Square. And next time you're over there or drive by or walk by, take a look at the landscape on the, what's, on the before slide shown in brown on the left. That is just a sea of gravel. There's nothing else there. No plants, no trees, nothing. The slide on the right, and I know you can't see it very well, but it's a, it's a rendering that we did to show how that landscape could be changed, to use native plants and use some of the ideas that I've put in this bulleted list of how we can think about landscape in parklands and lands that the county manages, like the courthouse, like this building, differently. And you've seen some of these before, but I just wanted to go through them real quickly with you. And as, as the, as the chair of the commission knows, I've been at this for quite some time trying to change this paradigm, and I think we need to change it for parklands as well. Use native and ziric plants almost primarily. Nothing else will, will work very well in Albuquerque, New Mexico, and Burnley County, New Mexico. Switch from gravel to natural landscape design. So something like, just to give you an example of natural landscape design, and this is in the county, high desert up in the foothills of, of Burnley County on this side of the mountain, used natural landscape design throughout that entire community. And those folks have accepted it. They like the way it looks and they don't complain about it. Use less costly paving patterns. We found, and I'm, I'm just going to go back to actually the first slide for a second.
Actually, Mr.
Have I?
I, I would like to just cut to the chase because I think that, I mean, I, I really appreciate this in-depth work that you have done. Obviously, you care about our landscape. You care about the health of our community because that's what these two issues are overlapping, the health, health of our people who are concerned about glyphosate. But there are other ways. So I really want to thank you and thank Mr. Barney for all of this work, and I will pledge to you that I will move forward with you and support this, particularly restarting your stakeholder and steering committees. And then this shifting paradigm and education, I think, is excellent and it's, it's a well, welcome and very important to our urban landscape. So unless there are any other questions for Mr.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah.
I, I just have a question. Is it illegal to use like vinegar and salt?
It, it actually is. The, the, the state has to approve all chemicals and all substances being used, substances being used on landscapes and, I'm sorry, on institutional landscapes.
Oh, so if I did it in my yard, I'm okay?
You're okay.
All right. Because it totally works on my yard.
It does. It does.
I'm just saying, you know, my wife is anti- I'm just saying, you know, my wife is anti, if I show up at Roundup, I've got to move somewhere else. And so I did a lot of research and a lot of stuff, and I ended up trying the old vinegar and salt thing. And it's been, you know, we've been weed-free for, you know, three years or so, and they don't come back. But I don't know. I don't know if that's a good thing. What if somebody buys a house and wants to plant something? Did I destroy the, you know? So it's easy to make decisions on something that's short-term, but to look at what you're doing in the long term, you know? I know it's natural, it's vinegar, it's salt. But what is it actually really doing? Thank you for bringing up that Xeriscaping isn't just, isn't a really great idea. All it really does is just heat up the atmosphere above us, and it really makes drought a more prevalent place where we already are dealing with drought. So thank you for supporting native plants and trees, right? And so I don't want to have any more statements other than that, just to make sure that I didn't break the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Radomich, for your work on this. I am probably the only one up here that's a certified commercial pesticide applicator through my work in my landscaping business. So I do understand this use of chemicals, safe use of chemicals, and the issues with landscaping. But what I have to say is that this is very different than what I do in commercial landscaping or residential landscaping. This is institutional public use of public money to maintain public facilities that the public uses. So it's a little bit different than the work that I do and my crews do. I think on your peer municipalities, what I have to say there is it's hard to be in the vanguard. It's not always, you know, it's much easier to say, everybody else is doing it that way, so they must be right. We can look back in history and find many examples of that. And it wasn't right. So I'm not sure that that's a great argument to say that we're right or wrong on this because Austin is doing it and nobody else is, and us. The fact that the city of Albuquerque, some of our other peers in the region, aren't doing this. You know, we also have one of the lowest workforce participation rates in the entire United States, which contributes to the difficulty finding workers to fill these positions, to do this kind of work. So I can understand why some of our competitors or peers in the region are not that interested in tackling a problem that requires a much deeper pool of workers. But we've led that, and I commend the county, county manager, the commission for doing that. And I think that we can't let bad design in the past, i.e. gravel, moonscape, as I like to call them, we can't let that let us say, well, let's make bad public health decisions because we made bad planning decisions in the past. That one doesn't justify the other. And so I think we do have to follow the science on glyphosate and some of the, and all the chemicals. Frankly, I don't think that glyphosate is the only culprit. As you say, there's much more dangerous players out there that perhaps we are using. And then, you know, lastly, I think on the cost of herbicides and chemicals, that's up across the board. And so I think we need to be mindful that this may not necessarily just be because of the glyphosate change, but between 2018 and 2022, a lot happened. And not just glyphosate, PVC, lumber, you know, many of these things have increased in cost. So I think this is something we've got to take a close look at, and I'm interested in having some further conversations with you about, you know, where we go with this. But I do think when we're talking about public facilities, public money, and public interest, you know, it is a different calculation than it is on someone's individual residence or, you know, a large commercial player that's really dealing with different considerations than we have to protect the public interest. So thank you for your work.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Barboa and then Commissioner Benson. I'm not sure who put their hand up first, so. Go ahead, Vice Chair Barboa.
Thank you, Chair Baca. And I will look more into your part. I thank you so much for this hard work. I think the recommendations that you have and sort of the future is, I really like what you're talking about, the future. And I know that costs money. And, right, like I learned from the pollinators, Terry Detwiler has been doing these, that they, you know, it is killing our bees. We know, like, this whole ecosystem that works off, and we need those insects and animals and pieces to work together to actually have a clean environment. So I'm excited what we can come up with. I am worried about your recommendation to not limit it. I think that's a hard place to take back. I understand the problems, and I'm glad that, honestly, that we have smart people looking at it and trying to lead the way. So I'll look more into these. Definitely want to follow up more with you and hopefully hear more from Commissioner Olivas. But that, yeah, I think these recommendations for future and how we can use native turf, I mean, Tampinario just had its groundbreaking. I wish we had, you know, planned that native landscaping there ahead of time. But again, we're learning as we're growing, and I think it's worth it to our environment that we make these investments. So just thank you and look forward to hearing more.
Thank you, Vice Chair Barboa.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Benson.
You did it.
I think we can hear you, Commissioner. You just have to go a little closer. Try again.
Is that better?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair Barboa. Thank you, sir, for the presentation. And I have no idea what you're talking about, but I find it fascinating. And I know Commissioner Olivas is probably in lockstep with you in everything you're saying. The biology, though, and the chemistry is fascinating to me. And appreciate your effort here and your passion, for sure. I'm sorry the city didn't respond. And I think Commissioner Olivas made a good point about staffing being tough. But we know that they do pursue different issues if it's a priority. But you obviously have an audience here, and we look forward to more information from you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, John. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners.
Thank you, John. Let's see. So we are now at public comment. You will have two minutes to share your comments. You will then be notified when your time is up. For those participating via Zoom, you will be muted and moved to the waiting room. Should any of the commissioners have follow-up questions to your comments, you will have an opportunity to answer. Julianne, how many do we have signed up to speak?
Madam Chair, we have three signed up this evening, two in person and one via Zoom.
Okay, please read the names and.
We will start with Mr. David Campbell, followed by Alan Lasek, followed by Tad Neminsky.
Madam Chair, I signed up for general comment inadvertently. I'd like to speak on item number 10.
Oh, okay. You don't want to use your opportunity now. Mr. Campbell.
I don't know. I mean, I'll do it at the chairs. I'm ready to talk about.
So the item 10A is the county-city government consolidation. I'll defer to Commissioner Olivas. But generally, unless invited to the podium, there's not individual public comment for each item.
So actually, we would love to hear your comments now, Mr. Campbell.
Great, thank you.
I'm glad you're here.
Madam Chair and members of the county commission, my name is David Campbell. About 20 years ago, I worked on this project to attempt to bring city and county governments together. And over the 20 years, and that did not pass. It was put out to a vote and did not pass back in 2004. But in the time since, about 20 years, we have seen a couple of things happen. One is that we have seen many more government agencies become city and county agencies. In fact, we have many in our local government or our local environment that are already city and county agencies. And I won't go through a full list, but I'd like to give some indications of which ones those are. The Water Utility Authority, AMAFCA, all of our libraries, the bus system, ABQ Ride. Of course, aviation is a joint city and county operation. County clerk is joint city and county. And all of the five independently elected positions in the county serve all citizens of both within and outside of the city. The air board, the metro detention center, the metro court, district court, district attorney, the zoo, the biopark, museums, voter registration, election management are now under the county clerk, MRGCD. All of these are joint city and county entities. If not formally entities, they serve both city and county. Even most recently, we heard tonight about a joint housing authority that would be done between the city and the county. We're also about to talk about a joint city and county behavioral health effort or an authority. So it seems to me that the time is ripe for us to be speaking about the possibility for a metropolitan.
I'm going to ask you to continue because I really, I'm going to take my prerogative to allow you to finish your thoughts, Mr. Campbell, because I'm really happy you're here, too, to give us your history.
And I will keep it short. I mean, I have a few notes here. But we, as, you know, my background is in local government. I've got a master's in public administration, and I have served, as the chair knows, in various positions within the city of Albuquerque and been an advocate and an attorney in land use cases mostly. And one of the difficulties with the current forms of government that we have is that we continue to talk, and this is not to disparage the county, but you continue to talk in old ways about having an unincorporated county. Well, that stopped when the county became an incorporated urban county. When you adopted a county charter, you became, by language within that charter, an incorporated entity, one that assumed all of the powers and responsibilities and legal authority of a home-rule municipality. So what we have now is, ever since that time with the adoption of the urban charter or the county charter, is we have an incorporated municipality that's called a county surrounding an incorporated municipality called a home-rule city. And on every linear inch of those city limits, we have two entities touching each other. It's as if one city surrounds another city. And this causes, and many I think can appreciate this, either duplication of efforts or overlap of efforts. We had a great presentation about parks and rec. Well, why would we have different rules for the application of herbicides, you know, in one city called the county versus another city called the city? Let me point out one other. And again, I'm not disparaging anything that you're doing or the city's doing, but this is the situation we find ourselves in. The city did a comprehensive, years ago, when Bob White and I were working as city attorneys, we had a comprehensive plan, Albuquerque-Bernaleo County Comprehensive Plan for planning throughout the jurisdiction. Now, there is no extraterritorial authority of the city, and the city has adopted its own comprehensive plan. Now, the county is engaged, with all due respect to Enrico and my folks in county government, a county is engaged in the process of doing a comprehensive plan for Bernaleo County. The problem is neither of these are comprehensive, and neither of them are plans. And that's, it's a difficulty that I think we need to confront as a metropolitan area and begin talking about ourselves as indeed a metropolitan, a metropolitan government that has different needs, certainly, between the urbanized areas and the more rural areas. I'll stop there, Madam Chair. And I'd be glad to answer questions or respond, but I'm pleased to have had this chance to speak up about this important topic.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. I wanted to thank you for being here, Juan, and for your service to our community. I mean, I worked with you when you were a city attorney and also a CAO of the city of Albuquerque. I bridge those two bureaucracies and two governments. And I see, obviously, the importance of the city and the county working together. This is an information item that we're going to be discussing later, but I really felt it's important to make that statement that it's a discussion item now, but we are all kind of coming to this conclusion that things have changed since the last time we visited this idea as a community, as Bernaleo County and City of Albuquerque. So thank you for your words, and we'll continue with that as well. Commissioner Olivas.
I had one question. I just wanted you to comment on briefly, public safety. You know, what do you see there? How have things changed? How are things the same? And what kind of landscape are we looking at now from your perspective, given that historical dynamic?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, thanks for that question. As you probably know, the headquarters, the headquarters offices of the sheriff's office and the APD share the fifth floor of the public safety building at Fourth and Marquette. When I was CAO, the experience was that those two sides of the hallway did not really talk with each other. Heck, they didn't even have similar radio systems between APD and BCSO, so they couldn't talk to each other. And there really is a need, a high need in this community to have more officers, more sworn officers that are appropriately dispatched throughout the jurisdiction without regard to whether they're in the city called the county or the city called the city. And it seems to me that just that alone, when you add the several, and the sheriff's here can tell us how many sworn deputies he has, but you add the hundreds of deputies along with the hundreds of APD officers, and we might actually reach the kind of numbers that are recommended for public safety coverage and then appropriately dispatch them throughout the metropolitan area. I think that's one of the big opportunities for gains with a metropolitan government. And other communities have seen that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. I appreciate you being here and being an advocate for this important issue.
My pleasure. Thank you.
I just have a quick question. Do we dissolve APD and we just become the sheriff's department? And it would become Bernaleo County and get rid of the city and the mayor?
Well, there is a path, there is a path forward to this. And Commissioner, that's a great question. If you, and we could actually do a study and look at how Indianapolis and Marion County merge themselves, how Miami and Dade County merge themselves, Denver and Denver County, San Francisco, Louisville, Lexington. There are examples of this kind of thing. And each of them sort of goes about it in a different way.
And I asked you this question, and you could probably explain. You know, I would have to do research on what you're talking about. But I'm just going to say this, we're going to discuss it later. But, you know, I saw this on the agenda. I talked to elected officials in the South Valley. I talked to my residents in the South Valley. Talked to my relatives that live in the East Mountains. They said they would totally vote no against that.
Of course.
That they wouldn't want that, that they voted on that a few times, not only in 2004, but prior times. There was a time where somebody brought up and they just wanted the South Valley to be its own county, which failed miserably. So I just want everybody to know that that would go to the voters. That would be something that we would make really a decision on other than just present it to the voters.
Absolutely. This would not be done without a public vote, Commissioner. But the process of getting to that time involves writing an actual charter that would be a proposed metropolitan government document that would set up a government.
And I've seen city council meetings with nine people. Would you have more than nine people? I mean, we do it with five people and with more people, and we represent, I think, more people than the city of Albuquerque does. And how would you add elected officials to that massive nine people as it is? So I have real questions with real concerns on how government would work. I've watched city council meetings. It don't work so smoothly. So we will discuss this later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just want to add to that discussion. I'll call it in a second, Commissioners. This really is a community-wide discussion. This should never be looked at as This should never be looked at as us versus them, one being dissolved over the other. This really is a community-wide discussion that should include everyone. That's why we have it on here as a discussion, because what has been happening is people have been kind of talking around the sides. So I welcome that discussion. That is indeed why Commissioner Olivas asked to place this on the agenda. So bravo, that's what we need to do. And because we need to educate everyone about where we're going, how can we be efficient, effective, and one community? So with that, Commissioner Benson, and then Vice Chair Barboa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. You know, speaking of law enforcement, I've had two experiences. I live in the, what you say is no longer term, unincorporated part of the county, but it's not incorporated in the city. I consider myself being in Albuquerque, but I'm not part of the city. But I've got a couple stores inside the city. One of my stores was robbed by gunpoint with a gun to a 16-year-old's face. Soon as the robber left, we called 911 and we kept calling for the rest of the day. Never got a response. At my home, the call for 911 goes to a different location. They answer instantly. So I have, since I've been in office, I've spoken with dozens of residents just to get their feel for combining, because I definitely see efficiencies to be had. Without fail, I haven't talked to a single county resident, either in San Diego Heights, North Albuquerque Acres, Paradise Hills, who supported it. Not a single one. My city residents were ambivalent. They didn't feel strongly one way or another. Now, in terms of the law enforcement, I mean, that's the beauty of the elective sheriff's office. And I'm so proud of our current sheriff. He is working with APD and taking ownership of our whole community. But even with the last sheriff, they enforced the law inside city limits, really. And even if we were to combine governments, the sheriff is still in the elected office who reports to his constituents. So it's not like we could force the Sheriff's Department to do something that the sheriff wasn't willing to do. So, you know, I definitely see the efficiencies in it, and I'm all for efficiencies, but I also see that, how well the county does work. We just had a gentleman speak to us who has not gotten any response from the city of Albuquerque, and we do respond. We respond really well. We have the best bond rating you can get. So financially, we wouldn't be benefiting financially, we would be providing the benefit to the city of Albuquerque in that sense. So, you know, it may be time to discuss it, but I don't know who would benefit in this. That's not clear to me. I don't know if it's the city of Albuquerque would benefit from it, but not even the city of Albuquerque, I'm not talking about the residents of Albuquerque, I mean, the government office of Albuquerque would benefit. I guarantee they would, because they would get our efficiencies, but would they rise to our level? Like the 911 calls, for example. I'm not convinced they would. Meanwhile, would the constituents that are represented well by the five of us, would they still receive the representation that they get now? I'm not convinced they would. So that's my biggest concern, is making sure that we're not, you know, turning our back on the people that elected us for the reasons they elected us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Barboa.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for this rich discussion. I'm glad we're going to have time more on the committee. I just wanted to make sure a couple of things were noted, since people might be listening now that aren't listening later, but I actually think, and there might be sheriffs, I believe I was told by Chief Pettis at the beginning of the year that that actually doesn't happen anymore because it's been such a complaint, that the dispatch now just takes whoever's closest. I could be wrong with that. I don't want to say that that's right, but I believe that I was told that during the time. I just also want to remind folks that, right, this is like, I think the discussion is just needed. I don't actually know enough to say like I would support or not support something. I think the things I do know, right, public safety includes emergency response, includes our fire department. I would, I could say the same things. It also includes our behavioral health and the services that our county receive, that we receive, that are mostly located within what's considered the city. And that, and all of us, and specifically myself, my whole district, is in the city, considered inside the incorporated area of the city, but all of us have, you know, beneficiaries that are both in the city and non. And I think those points that folks made from outside of incorporated areas and the service, I think those are just as important. And so I'm excited to have this conversation. I just wanted to make sure that those were cleared up. I don't, you know, both that there's, you know, public safety includes our fire, includes our first responders, includes many of those teams we have, includes how we're responding to the behavioral health needs and homelessness and all those issues that everybody is dealing with. I would agree that both the city and the county are spinning their wheels to figure it out, and maybe, maybe it's just a matter of collaboration, but maybe it's a matter of thinking closer about the governments. I'm looking forward to the rich conversation.
Thank you, Vice Chair Barboa. This is unusual. Thank you for your two minutes.
Thank you.
Mr. Campbell.
My two minutes, my two cents.
Really appreciate it. We're going to continue with public comment, and we are going to come back to this item as a discussion item later in the agenda.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Oh, yes, Commissioner Benson, sorry.
Thank you so much. I apologize. I just wanted to point out, to Commissioner Barboa's point, with the dispatch, the Bernaleo County Dispatch is actually in my district. I highly recommend everybody take it to, it's an amazing operation. But yes, sometimes Bernaleo County does handle the dispatch for Albuquerque, but it's not consistently, it's not based on proximity. It's based on the city of Albuquerque throwing their hands up and asking us for help. And our dispatch is amazing, and they've never said no. So they, and when they handle both, those four souls are just, you know, handling a massive amount of phone calls for, you know, up to four hours, six hours, I think they did one night. So it's, yeah, sometimes we do, but no, they're two different dispatch centers. I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. So next on public comment, Julianne.
We have Mr. Alan Lasek via Zoom.
Madam Chair and County Commissioners, thank you very much for your time. My name's Alan Lasek, and I'm the Executive Director of the Department Association in New Mexico. We represent about 40,000 rental units, I guess I should have started with this, but 40,000 rental units in Bernaleo County. My comments are directed at Item 8A, which is the Landlord Incentive Program. And I, first off, I really want to thank the sponsors for bringing this resolution forward. I do believe that this is a step in the right direction. This type of policy will encourage property owners to, you know, house a very vulnerable population. That being said, and this touches a little bit on your guys' last conversation, but I won't get into that, I want to mention that the city of Albuquerque is also creating a similar program, and I've been a part of that committee for the past several months. I hope that this program moves forward, and I hope that we can work together with the city to help streamline both programs, because I think it's in our best interest for both programs to work similarly, and that landlords can easily navigate both programs. So we support this resolution, we're very happy to see this, and I would encourage the Commissioners to do the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Tam Nemaniski. Let me begin what I hear from these two shrinks, sharing, these two ladies sharing successes, their successes. Well, let me tell you. Education, doctors, lawyers, what they do, practice, practice, practice. My father used to say, one who stayed with one doctor never got well. How true is it, is his dad? I personally, I quit gambling, I quit smoking, through education, my knowledge, plan. I developed a plan. And yes, we have plenty, plenty medication, which is named vitamins. What doctors do, they pushing drugs, selling, they are selling for big pharmaceutical companies. That's what they do. So anyway, like these two ladies, she said they loving for some more money, but may also, one of them made statement, we always looking for ways. Well, that's right, practice, lawyers, doctors, practice, and looking for ways on who we are getting big simply. But to hear is simple education, I found out on the radio, and I turned it, my chronic pain through medication, through vitamins cured, and they never made cure either.
Thank you, sir. And that concludes public comment.
Okay, that concludes public comment. I, we moved an agenda item up for the county sheriff, but I want to take a personal prerogative here and also move a second item up after the sheriff's presentation, because this is our partners, the city, and some others that may have to leave early. So I'm going to need a vote on this, but I move that we move Item 9A, the Middle Rio Grande Housing Collaborative Joint Powers Agreement, up to follow before the consent agenda, to follow the sheriff's presentation on body cams.
Second motion.
Thank you. And we need a roll call vote for that. So am I clear? Do you understand what I'm trying to do? I was told that my mic was really low, and so I moved it up closer, so I hope you can hear me over there in California. Vice Chair Barboa. So we need a roll call vote on that agenda item change.
Chair Barboa.
Aye.
Vice Chair, I mean Chair Baca, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Well, I responded real quick to that.
That's all right, we got you. Commissioner Casar.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
So called.
Okay, thank you. So we will go back now to the sheriff's presentation on body cams. And then we'll follow with the JPA. Thank you, Sheriff Allen.
No problem. Madam Chair, County Commissioners and elected officials, first of all, what a great day to work in Bernaleo County. As I always say, it's always an honor and a privilege. Today, make a motion to approve a services agreement with Axon Enterprise, Inc., 2023-0396 for Axon Technology Package. Approve financial resolution to appropriate and budget $4,29,450 for the purpose of funding the Axon Enterprise contract, which provides the sheriff's office with body camera functionality. Authorize the county manager to approve expedendures exceeding the county manager's 200,000 threshold pursuant to administrative resolution 2018-49 with Axon Enterprise, Inc. Number four, authorize the county manager to approve subsequent amendments to the services agreement. And the summary is on June 30th of 2020, the Bernaleo County Commission passed administrative resolution 2020-67, supporting Comprehensive Senate Bill 8, signed into law by Governor Michelle Lujan-Gresham on July 8th of 2020, requiring law enforcement agencies to use body worn cameras. The Bernaleo County Sheriff's Office signed a contract with Utility, Inc. on November 29th, 2021. At this time, this contract met the state requirements as required by law for the use of body worn cameras. Based on the technological and staffing needs of the office, Utility, Inc. does not have the platform to properly support the office moving forward. On May 23rd of 2023, procurement sent the letter to Utility, Inc. to cancel the remaining contract. The Bernaleo County Sheriff's Office has conducted extensive research on the available types of technology platforms to equip and improve the functionality of the office. Through our research, we discovered Axon hardware and software technology manufactured by Axon Enterprise, Inc. is the premier vendor that offers a state-of-the-art technology platform with forward thinking to supplement staffing challenges and to combat the crime crisis. This Axon technology package will provide technology not only to meet state requirements for body worn cameras, but will include live two-way streaming, sensor input recording, automatic license plate readers, tasers, virtual reality training, and officer accountability and unlimited data storage. From here, I will give the podium to Lisa Sadio later.
Thank you, Sheriff Allen. I'm honored to be here this evening, presenting with you and your team, and also the partnership between the Sheriff's Department and the Procurement and Business Services Department over the last couple of months, and also representatives from the company Axon. As stated, we have been in partnership for the past couple of months negotiating a services contract that we are bringing before the commission tonight. This particular services contract is, the term would be an initial five years with an additional five years for a maximum of 10 years. This particular contract, as negotiated, for not to exceed a 10-year term, the first year cost is estimated at $650,000 exclusive of applicable taxes, and then has an estimated annual reoccurring expense, and it's a software as a service for the entire technology platform as the sheriff presented, which will provide many benefits for the sheriff's department beyond body worn cameras. The annual amount will, after the first year, will be $1,683,297.45 exclusive of applicable taxes. This particular reoccurring amount will be for years two to 10. We are utilizing a cooperative contract, an existing contract with the University of Nebraska, which per our procurement ordinance allows us to do so, utilize an existing contract that has already been competitively bid. All of the products and services as presented in the services agreement are included in that services contract. This contract also covers, we have several protections in the contract. The contract also covers warranty for the term of the contract, which includes hardware and software updates to the latest technology, all through the duration of the contract and the terms. The estimated number of sheriff's office sworn personnel to be outfitted with a technology package is 332 sworn officers, with 225 having taser, and also 125 having in-car camera with APLR technology. At this time, Madam Chair, members of the commission, we stand for questions.
I'd like to begin by first asking Madam Clerk, can you please issue a resolution number?
Yes, ma'am. FR 2023-68.
-68. And I move approval.
Second.
And it's been sent in. Discussion, please. Commissioner Olivas.
I just wanted to thank the sheriff and his staff for giving me a briefing on this and being very thorough in, you know, vetting the existing provider of the service and and, you know, what the needs of the department are and how we make sure that we meet the needs of the public. You know, we know that we have incredible law enforcement gaps in our community and a lot of challenges that your deputies are dealing with and collaborating with APD. And one of the things that I think is most important about this contract is that it will put all of the law enforcement agencies in the metropolitan region on the same system. This is what APD uses. This is what state police uses. And right now, we're using something else. My understanding from sheriff was that the district attorney has to have a separate room to download our current evidence and utilize, you know, extra staff, extra time, extra delays. And this leads to difficulties in prosecuting cases and, you know, moving offenders to the right places. So, you know, while it's never a great thing, I think, to have to go back, cancel a contract and enter into something new that is more expensive. I think this is the right thing to do in the scheme of protecting public safety and moving us forward in a unified cooperative approach with our colleagues in the region. So I want to commend the sheriff for your work on this and Deputy County Manager Sadio White for your support here as well. And, you know, this is definitely something that I think we need to support to support our law enforcement and keep our community safe.
I also would like to thank you, Sheriff, and thank you, Lisa, for the good work that you have done. Due diligence on something that has been very important, I think, not only to us as a commission, but I think to our public. I think people are frankly expecting this kind of transparency, this kind of good work. And sometimes you have to really roll up your sleeves and make this kind of a difficult decision and put money toward it. But I think that it is in the, in the real, as my colleague, Commissioner Olivas said, this is, this is a good thing. It's a good consistency that we're going to have throughout the community. So, thank you. And Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Sheriff, and this is a great example of the good work that you're doing. And I'm proud of the work that you're doing for the community as a whole. And when you reviewed the numbers with me, I was especially taken back by not only your commitment to public safety, but also the analysis that you did in the research, in the different systems that are out there, and why this one would you prefer. Then, and I believe I did refer the comments to you, but my SOB representative, Jim Stewart, whom I meet with regularly, he is a huge fan of this platform. This is the platform that his sheriff's department used back in Texas. So the only thing that was kind of a, that you were just kind of sure to make me aware of was the cost. And after reviewing the data with you, what was evident to me was that it's really just an investment, that the cost of not doing it in terms of public safety and human lives and, and, and lack of, lack of legal protection in terms of prosecution. We weren't able to do that with the old system. Yeah, it might have been cheaper, but we got what we paid for. And so this is really an investment, I see, and it's a necessary investment. You did a great job convincing me of that. And yeah, I look forward to this. I think this is an easy decision financially, that the cost will be outweighed by the positive effect that we'll get. So, well done. You got my support.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Barbo.
Yes, just quickly to say thank you again for your leadership, Sheriff. I, I just want to remind folks that I, and I wasn't on the commission, maybe other commissioners that were could speak a little bit too. But I was watching and remember that Commissioner, when Commissioner O'Malley sort of passed the million-dollar budget just because the previous sheriff was like sort of refusing to do body worn cameras, right? And so we didn't know what it was going to cause. I think that number was thrown out there and, and then eventually used, but not with the type of, just ditto to what Commissioner Benson said, the thorough research, the thorough explanations, and your team just really knowing and explaining how this works and how this actually improves, you know, brings us to the twenty, to twenty twenty-three and can improve the way we do work and hopefully even, and protect our law enforcement and our community. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, just thank you for a great job, great presentation. You know, sometimes when it's broke, you got to fix it. So thanks for, you know, making sure that when we took that step forward to fix it, that was the best possible fix that we can find that's out there. I think what's huge is, you know, technology is always moving forward, as we all know. And I like that part of this contract that, you know, they're going to upgrade not only the software, but the hardware as that moves forward. What's that way? You're not stuck with, you know, outdated equipment that doesn't do the job. So I think you did your due diligence, Sheriff, and definitely kudos to you and your staff. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any, anything further?
First of all, I'd like to thank my staff. Honestly, everybody did a great job. Deputy County Manager Lisa Sadio White, Shirley Reagan, the county manager. Now, like I said, we're all about community and what the technology and what we can do for our community as a whole. That's just the bottom line, not only to protect our deputies and make sure that they're safe and have the best equipment, but at the same time, we shouldn't even be talking about body worn cameras and transparency. That just comes with the job in two thousand twenty-three. We're looking at something further and something beyond and something that we can build on and something that goes beyond my tenure, that I'm so honored to serve here. So our deputies are always safe and have the right technology. So thank you so much for the support, the comments, and again to my staff and Major for doing all the work and for Axon for being very transparent with the numbers. Things got a little weird at times, but we got through it. So, thank you so much.
With that technical closing of things getting a little weird, I will call for a vote on FR two thousand twenty-three sixty-eight.
Chair Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barbo.
Yes.
Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
So called.
And that passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work. So now we're going to move on to an approval. I don't know the agenda item number since we moved it up. A joint powers agreement between the City of Albuquerque and the County of Burnaleo on the Middle Rio Grande Housing Collaborative. I ask this be moved up because I feel, as it's no secret, that I feel the importance of our partnership with our colleagues in the city is, cannot be understated. And this, this item on housing has been talked about from many angles. And we've all, we all talked about how this, it's a many-faceted, you know, solution. There's not one solution to our, our issue with housing and homelessness as well. But this collaborative is a long-range planning effort and a long-range look at a joint commitment and a good working relationship with our partners at the city. So this is a joint powers agreement. In the initial meeting, I believe, of this commission, we, we talked about it and called for this to occur. There have been many meetings between city officials, city experts, county officials, county experts. And I think that we've come away with a very succinct and important JPA that we can then move forward on. So maybe Commissioner Olivas might have a couple of comments, but then I would like to call Bob White from the city administration up to say a few words on behalf of our partner at the city.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really just want to commend the partners here, the partnership between our county manager, Marcos Gonzalez, our economic development director, Betty White, Bob White, Eric Riego. Some really fantastic partners on both sides of this, city and county. You know, it's, it's too often that we kind of beat up on each other and talk about how one side is, you know, dragging and not putting in enough. And this is a good example of us both coming together and doing so in really a very timely manner. I mean, this is something that we just passed back in February. So this is a very quick movement of government on a really urgent and pressing need. This is still just the start. We're by no means there. But this really sets forward the framework and puts in place the, you know, the picture of what this organization looks like. What does the staffing look like? How is this governed? And then, of course, this will be followed up with an MOU that will really fill in those fine details. But I think this is just a really unique opportunity for us to partner and tackle one of the most challenging issues that our region faces. This is a problem all over the United States, and it's not going to get better until we really dive in and put the right resources in place. And I think this is a step in the right direction. So I want to thank my colleague, Madam Chair, for, for all of her work and advocacy to keep everyone together and keep this moving forward. And also I wanted to single out Counselor Benton, who's been instrumental on the city side in really bringing some of his ideas and experience. So really hope that all my colleagues tonight will support this and move us forward.
Bob, would you come forward on behalf of the city? I also neglected to mention our wonderful county attorney, Ken Martinez, had a lot to do with the drafting and his staff putting this document together and keeping it to the salient points and moving us forward. So timely manner. Thank you, Ken. Bob?
Madam Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Robert White. I'm an Associate Chief Administrative Officer for the City of Albuquerque. The CAO, Lawrence Rial, asked me to come over and express the administration's support for this joint powers agreement approval by the commission and urge, and will commit that the city administration will work closely with the county in implementing the JPAs if they are approved by both bodies. As I'm sure the commissioners know, the council is scheduled to take this matter up at their meeting tomorrow night. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. White? Any comments on the JPA? Okay, I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and if we could have a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Chair Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barbo.
Yes.
Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
So called.
Thank you. Sometimes change and partnerships happen incrementally. And I think this is one of those times where we can move forward and keep the long view. Thank you for being here. So, we are now at the approval of our consent agenda. We've had some meaty issues and some important proclamations here tonight. But, so now, Madam Clerk, can you please provide resolution numbers for items six A, six B, and six C?
Yes, ma'am. Six A one, FR two thousand twenty-three dash sixty-nine. Six A two is FR two thousand twenty-three dash seventy. Six A B one is FR two thousand twenty-three dash seventy-one. Six A B two is FR two thousand twenty-three dash seventy-two. And C is FR two thousand twenty-three dash seventy-three.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And ordinance number for six F, is that?
Oh, sorry.
Do we do that already?
No, Madam Chair, go ahead.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash fifteen.
Thank you. And I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
And a roll call vote, all those in favor, Madam Clerk.
Chair Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barbo.
Yes.
Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
So called.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I could just take a quick point of personal privilege. Rather than pull these items off of the consent agenda tonight, I just wanted to call attention to a couple items that I think really just speak to the strength of our county and our staff here. One item in my district brings in five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars of state money for improvements to Anaya Road, which is near Wantomas and three thirty-seven. That's leveraged with a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of county money. So, you know, a great deal and great work by our public work staff to bring in some money that's much needed for improvements in my district. And some other items that are on here that relate to some of the capital outlay money that was secured by our county staff, county lobbyists. I know a couple of us commissioners went up and lobbied on these items. So just quickly, this is not all of them by any means, but just some highlights. A hundred and ninety thousand dollars for BCSO, reality-based training. Five hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars for a recovery support center. East Central Avenue improvements, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is in my district. Eight hundred thousand dollars for our East Mountain Vista Grande Community Center complex. The Youth Services Center, our youth detention center, five hundred and one thousand dollars. Three hundred and thirty thousand dollars supporting our law enforcement vehicles. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for road improvements. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars for our community school partnership with Albuquerque Public Schools. And a couple more items in my district reauthorized for four hundred thirty-four thousand dollars improvements off of Tablezaun Road in New Mexico three thirty-three, as well as a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars for the Whispering Pines Senior Meal Site. So really terrific work across the board by, by all of our county staff. And thank you to our county manager for, for making these possible. And I just wanted to highlight those.
Thank you, Commissioner Olivas. Appreciate that. Okay, so where am I? I apologize. So I think we are going to just power through this agenda rather than take a dinner break. So thank you for your patience all, and we will move on to adoption of ordinance of, to amend the county code, procurement and business services, Lisa Sadio White.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Viola Cunningham.
Thank you, Miss Cunningham.
I'm the Director of Procurement and Business Services Department for Burnaleo County. Before I introduce you, before I come before you to introduce an item. This item is titled Amendment to Burnaleo County Procurement Ordinance. Motion to introduce and approve for publication text amendment to the Burnaleo County Procurement Ordinance, Chapter Two, Article Five, Division One. And first, it'll be section three sixty-one. Exemption from the procurement ordinance, section two dash three sixty-seven. Procurement preferences, section two dash three sixty-eight, small purchases. Section two dash three seventy, emergency procurements. And lastly, section two dash thirty, three hundred eighty-five protest and amendments. In summary, the procurement ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash eighteen of the Burnaleo County Code was adopted at the March twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen Board of County Commission Administrative Meetings and provides for the fair and equitable treatment of all persons involved in public procurement to maximize the maximum value of public funds, provides for transparency and accountability, and safeguards for man maintaining a procurement system of quality and integrity. The following text amendments are proposed. Exemption from procurement ordinance, section two, three hundred and sixty-one, paragraph A, number twenty-five, for the purpose of clarity, added the federal, state, and local laws and to include medical, medication-assisted treatment services, also called MAT, which is necessary to ensure the treatment services of this nature can be exempted due to the stringent layers of law and numerous jurisdictions that control these types of treatment programs. Two, exemption from procurement ordinance, section two dash three hundred and sixty-two, number thirty-three, added subparagraph to allow the purchase, exchange, sell, and transportation of animals, their food, medical testing supplies, and prescription animal food for use by county services. The next is procurement preferences, section two dash three hundred and sixty-seven, number three, adds to the inclusion of Native American business subcontractors and residents and American, Native American veteran business contractors to the section as required by state law. Next, the procurement preference sections two. Next, the procurement preference, Sections 2-367, Paragraph B, Number 2. Statement Preferences deleted, Section A through G, and replaces it with application of preferences. Prior to making a recommendation of award of contracts pursuant to a request for bid or request for proposals, the central purchasing office shall apply any applicable procurement preferences provided under the state law to the amount of the bid or to the proposed score. Next is Procurement Preferences, Section 2-367. The fifth paragraph, A and B. Eligibility of preferences add the inclusion of Native American business contractors or residents and Native American veteran business contractors to these sections as required by state law. Procurement Preference, Section 2-367, 6. Limitation Percentages. Increase from 15% to 18%. The total amount of all preferences applied under this section, including the applicable state preferences for the purchase of tangible personal property, service, or construction in any single award, shall not exceed 18% with a limit on state preferences as it's set forth under the State Procurement Code. The next is also in the same vein of the procurement preferences. Section 2-367, Number 7. County Preference Limitations Dollar Amount. Increases from $150,000 to $180,000. When applying the county preferences as set forth in this section, the total dollar amount of county preferences shall not exceed $180,000. On small purchases, which falls under Section 2-368(c), increased value not to exceed $80,000 to increase to $100,000. Notwithstanding the requirements of this section, the central purchasing office may procure professional services having a value not exceeding $100,000, excluding applicable state and local grocery receipts tax based upon the best obtainable price. Emergency purchases, we would like to within Section 2-370e, change within three business days to promptly thereafter, but no later than 30 days. Promptly thereafter would indicate that any emergency procurement, the central purchasing office shall post to its website the notice identifying at a minimum what the dollar amount was and who was awarded that purchase. And lastly, the protests and amendment for the Section 2-385, Section A, add clarifying language about the timeframe of a protest that would be allowable to be received. With this, I will close my presentation. And I would like to recommend a floor amendment as follows to be included to the published version. This needs to come at Section 2-367, Procurement Preferences, after Paragraph B, Number 2. State Preferences, which fall on Line 32. And it should read, Purchasing Office Shall Apply to the Amount of the Bid or the Proposal Score any applicable procurement preferences in accordance with the applicable state law. I will now stand for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Questions?
I just, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank you for, again, for your briefing on this and working with Deputy County Manager and yourself on understanding what these changes were. And again, wanted to highlight the important changes, I think there's many, but on incorporating Native American preference, which is part of the State Procurement Code. And while we've been already following that, it's important that it's actually stated in our policy. The work that you added in here on animals and making sure that animal care can procure the services, the drugs, and everything that they need to care for our animals is really important to all of us that love our friends. And then, lastly, on MAP, that's critical, that we're able to acquire that service that can be a, you know, life-altering and potentially fatal if we don't have that service. So I think it's really prescient that you all added those. And with that, I would make a motion to move this forward for the comment period.
Moved and seconded. Any other comments?
Madam Chair, just for the record, Commissioner Olivas's floor amendment along with Ms. Viola's proposed will be combined in one vote. It can be.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So I was gonna, I was gonna make the floor amendment here. So I guess I defer to Julianne. Do I need to still read this into the record?
Please do.
Okay. So I apologize, this is a little lengthy. But thank you to our staff, from Jared, everybody that helped us draft this. So I'll make the amendment, and then I just have a couple of comments on it. But Section 2-375, Public Acquisition of American-Made Motor Vehicles Required. Incorporate the following sections and paragraphs as follows. B, Zero-Emissions Electric Vehicle Purchases. A, motor vehicle means a vehicle with four wheels that (a) is made by a manufacturer. B, is manufactured primarily for use on public streets, roads, or highways. C, has not been modified from the original manufacturer's specifications. D, is rated at not less than 2,200 pounds unloaded base weight. And E, has a maximum speed capability of at least 65 miles per hour. B, electric vehicle means a motor vehicle that derives all of the vehicle's power from electricity stored in a battery that (a) has a capacity of not less than 6 kilowatt-hours. B, is capable of powering the vehicle for a range of at least 40 miles. C, is capable of being recharged from an external source of electricity. And, item C, when replacing a motor vehicle, priority will be given to electric vehicles. If an electric vehicle is not available or otherwise unsuitable to fulfill the intended vehicle use, documentation of the rationale for the purchase of another type of non-zero emissions motor vehicle is required before the purchase of a conventional motor vehicle. Rationale for conventional fossil fuel vehicle purchases shall be approved with a waiver of the zero emissions fuel requirement by the Fleet Director and Chief Procurement Officer. And all waivers with justification shall be filed with the central purchasing office. Item D, the county shall not purchase a cost-prohibitive electric or other type of non-zero emission motor vehicle exceeding 10% more than the cost of a conventional fossil fuel motor vehicle unless it is deemed in the best interest of the county to do so as determined by the Fleet Director and Chief Procurement Officer. E, the purchases of electric vehicles are required as fleet replacements unless a waiver is granted to help reduce tailpipe emissions and dependence on fossil fuels. Implementation of electric vehicles will increase as vehicle supply stabilizes and electric charge station infrastructure is expanded.
Okay.
So moved.
And seconded. And you had a statement you wanted to make?
I just wanted to comment, in addition to thanking the staff for this, how important I believe this measure is in the scheme of the crisis we face on a planetary scale. We're not going to solve that problem here at the Burnaleo County Commission meeting tonight. I'm well aware of that. But we have to do everything we can within our power as elected officials, setting policy for our county, to lead by example and tackle this problem and show that we're serious about this. And that is truly my intention behind this amendment and working closely with our staff to make sure that this is something that is viable, but also pushes the envelope. This is not necessarily going to be easy. This is not going to be a perfect, smooth transition. But we have to do this. The stakes are too high. We all know. Look around you. Look in the communities I represent, these mountains, the fire risks that we're seeing, the water table dropping in the city, you know, the urban heat that we're experiencing. The effects are all around us, and we have to act, and we have to act now. And that's what I believe this sets us on a path to do, using the purchasing power of this county and using our fleet to shift to a cleaner mode of transportation for our county business. So, thank you.
Bravo. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? It's been moved and seconded. Before we go to a roll call vote, I do want to say that Commissioner Casada has been excused of an emergency to take care of. So, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Chair Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
So called.
Thank you, and that passes. Well done. Thank you, Viola. Thank you, Lisa. So we move on to item 8A. Landlord Incentive Pilot Program. Madam Clerk, can you please issue a resolution number?
Yes, ma'am. AR 2023-74.
74. And we have Director Betty Valdez to present.
Good evening, Chair Baca, Commissioners. My name is Betty Valdez. I'm the Director of Burnaleo County Housing. And I'm here to request approval for our landlord incentive pilot program. The pilot program will cover $7,500 for damages for a unit that is rented out to a program participant of Burnaleo County housing programs. It'll include damages caused by the program participant. We will do an inspection. When that program participant moves in, the landlord will submit to us a damage report, a claim. We will inspect those damages. We will do reimbursement for those damages. And that's it in a nutshell, and I'll stand for any questions.
I'd like to call on the sponsors. You want to say a few words, Vice Chair and Commissioner Benson? Commissioner Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Ms. Valdez, for moving on this so quickly. One of my concerns with the ordinance that we passed, so to start with, we've got a shortage of available housing. We've got to improve that somehow. And one of my concerns with the ordinance where landlords weren't allowed to consider the source of incomes was that they do consider it because of the associated risks involved. And so my request to you was to come up with an incentive plan that encourages landlords. I do want to make more Section 8 housing available because it's desperately needed. And we've all known or been there, as Ms. Barboah has, individuals who've been blessed by the program. So we want to encourage it. And I think this is a great solution. I think it's a good union between the government and business. And it's how we can incentivize landlords to make their units more available, that we're not just saying, hey, you've got to take all the risk and deal with it. We're saying, hey, we're going to take the risk with you. So thank you, Ms. Valdez, for this plan. I'm really proud of it. I think the landlords, actually, we had landlords speak to this issue before. And I think the feedback I've gotten from them has been very positive, as well as industry leaders. So, yeah, well done. And thank you to Commissioner Barboah as well for her sponsorship of this and her support. And thank you. So I absolutely support this, and I ask all the Commissioners to join us in that. And back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. Vice Chair Barboah, do you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Benson, for co-sponsoring this with me. I think our work with, you know, we've done some of this work to be able to dive into how this plays out between renters and landlords. And we met with, I got to meet with Alan Lasek and a whole team of landlords when I was drafting and passed the Housing Discrimination Act. And we heard really clearly, right, that there's too much loss to be had and that there is a risk folks are taking. So I wanted to meet that. I wanted to be practical and meet that and support our landlords. I also just must say, I've been across the country, I want to say that I've learned through this process that we, that my district, which is the most dense district in the whole state, not just our county, holds most of those Section 8 vouchers. And many of those landlords that were at that table really pleading not to pass the Discrimination Act were saying, you know, that, and many of those landlords own many properties across the whole county. So we're not talking about folks like my sister who owns one property here. And I want to protect those folks, too. But many of those big property, big landlord, big property owners were really against the Anti-Discrimination Act. And I just, I really want to meet their needs. I think this is important. I'm glad we're passing it. And I hopefully will pass it with the vote right now. But I just want to make sure I say that while it is discrimination when you place all of the housing vouchers and only one or most of the housing vouchers in low-income communities, or all the housing vouchers in communities that have high crime rates. It is discrimination when folks leave those and get bills that then get, that get collections that follow them, and then they're not able to get new housing. So thank you, Mr. Alan Lasek, for showing up this evening. I want to work with you. I committed then to working with you all as well. And I hope this means that not only that we'll recover from maybe some losses that you all, that your folks have experienced, but that actually this means expansion, expansion of more houses across the county, not just in low-income communities, that will have openings for vouchers because you don't have that reason anymore. That means our housing department is going to do more work, right, to make sure that these dollars are being spent wisely, but up to $7,500 to fix those damages that we've heard a lot about. So I just want to make sure this is about recovery and supporting our housing and big property owners and small property owners. But this is also with the expectation that it's expanding the amount of housing, the amount of apartments and land property owners that will accept vouchers from our communities. So thank you again, great partnership. Happy to be shoulder to shoulder with Commissioner Benson on this. And just want to make sure I was clear on my statements. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Barboah. Commissioner Olivas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, sponsors, for bringing this. I actually had a couple of questions for you, Ms. Valdez. Is there any kind of cap? I realize there's the, you know, this only has a certain amount of funding. But is there any kind of cap on the number of units or a percentage of number of units that a landlord could enroll in this program? So, you know, someone has 20 units, can they, let's just say hypothetically, all 20 of those units, they rent to vouchers and they enroll those in this program? Is that possible?
All the units are eligible if there is damage to the units and it is from one of our participants. However, we are saying if the damage is from one of our participants and it's the second time, we are going to recommend, our program participants are entitled to due process. So we will start a proposed termination process on our tenant so that there is not this cycle of damage, we're going to pay damage, we're going to pay. So we're going to propose termination on the damage on our side as a housing department.
You said that was on the second?
On the first offense.
On the first offense, okay. So that was another one of my questions, is sort of, what are the consequences here? Because I like the fact that we're making landlords whole. They're, you know, ultimately victims in this, if their property is damaged and they don't have enough in the deposit to compensate for that damage and the lost rent. It's important that we help make them whole. But I'm a little bit concerned about sort of, and we see this in a lot of areas now where there's just no consequences. It's sort of, so now you can do this damage, and does anything happen besides maybe termination from the program?
Well, that's a big consequence. You lose your voucher, you don't have housing. So that's a huge consequence for the program participant. So that's a huge consequence for the program participant. But they are entitled to due process, you know. So oftentimes, they have a son, or there's a behavioral health problem within the family, and they're entitled to their due process. So we have to hear each family's case individually. So we built that into the administrative plan for that due process to happen when there is an incident.
Okay. And then the last question I had here is, does any of this money available for this program cover the cost of evictions? So for that landlord to, you know, if they discover their property's been extensively damaged or something going on there that's out of their lease, does this help that landlord proceed with eviction proceedings that can sometimes be costly if they have to get attorneys involved or anything like that?
It currently does not, Commissioner. However, we do cover two months' rent, but we can look at eviction and build that into it. And I can get on your calendar and have that discussion with you because this is not effective until after the next fiscal year, so there's time to have discussion about that.
Thank you, Ms. Valdez. Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I appreciate the sponsors' work on this, and it is something I do support. You know, I just wanted to ask those questions about some of the tiny little gaps that I see that maybe we can work on, but happy to talk more with you about that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sponsors, for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Commissioner Olivas, I think that's a great question. And as a, as someone who is involved in real estate like yourself and business owner, I think it's astute. And one of the comments I remember from the landlords before was that the concern is that if somebody's in Section 8 housing, that they're not, it's not their money, and so they don't take care of the property as if it was their. To which Commissioner Barboa said, you know, I was raised right, and you just take care of, you take care of your property and anything you've entrusted to. And so this is a way to kind of handle both concerns, is that if somebody needs a helping hand and they need a help, extra step up, that's what this is for. This holds both parties accountable as well. So if somebody's just taking advantage of the system, and there was one landlord who talked about every doorknob in their entire apartment had been taken. But that takes a lot of effort, and there's no real purpose, and it was just a major pain for them because they couldn't rent it out without replacing all those doorknobs, and they had to cover all the costs. The landlord can do it, rent it out to another Section 8 housing person who, the intent is, is somebody who is grateful for the option and is using it as a step up because they need a helping hand. And then this would help sort out the individuals who are taking advantage and they're abusive of the system because that's obviously not what any of us want. So anyway, I think Ms. Valdez has done a really good job, as well as legal in their help in kind of covering all the bases here. But we can also amend it in the future if more is needed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. Commissioner Barboa?
Yeah, just to cover up, I just like, thanks again, Betty. I meant to thank you extremely for moving on this when we brought it up, and we've been talking about landlord incentives for a while. And so this is great. Thank you for your work on this. I also, just to say, you know, to Commissioner Olivas's points, I think I would really want to see the data, both on like where, on the number of eviction. Before we add more, or I don't know if that was thoughtful in considering it still within the 7,500 limit, but I just want to make sure, I want to see the data before we add it or additionally, and maybe let this program try itself out. Just to the point that, right, I think there, we, and like to, we're trying to have accountability on both sides. Like, it's a big deal if somebody who went through the strenuous part to show and prove that they're not only low-income, but as are things states, very low income to achieve access to a voucher, you have to be very low income. And then for someone to, for that to be threatened, to lose that, they won't get it again, right? And they've probably been on a two-year waiting list to get it in the first place. So I just want to make sure that we're thinking of the balance of both when, you know, both, on both ends. And that's what I'm trying to do by both passing the Nondiscrimination Act and really sponsoring this for incentive to landlords. I just want to make sure we're considering sort of that balancing act that holds both players accountable.
Well said. Thank you, Vice Chair Barboa, and thank you, Commissioner Benson. So which one of you are going to move and second this? Has that happened yet? I don't think so.
I believe so.
Second!
Okay, and we need a roll call vote, please.
Chair Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
So called.
And that passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Valdez. Item 8C, Economic Development Project Revenue Bond for La Serena Apartments LLC. Madam Clerk, can you please issue a resol- resolution number?
Yes, ma'am. AR 2023-75.
75, thank you. And Mr. Marcos Gonzalez?
Good evening, Commissioners. Marcos Gonzalez, Economic Development Director for the county. Members, Madam Chair, and members of the Commission, the Economic Development Department recommends authorizing the Bernalillo County Commission to approve a inducement resolution declaring the intent to issue multifamily housing revenue bonds not to exceed $20 million on behalf of La Serena Apartments LLC. And this will be a brand-new 100-unit senior affordable housing project on the county's west side on Coors and Blue Water, and will be a companion project to the San Roque project, which the Commission had already approved. And also I'll note that the developers are here this evening. Thomas Development, and I'm Laura Chavez from the Supportive Housing Coalition.
Yes. Would you like to say a few words? I just want to commend you, Marcos, and thank you for bringing this forward. This is not only 100 more units, which we are very excited on the west side, but senior housing, so very important that we have this kind of housing project. And so you've heard discussion about housing, and this is one of those that I hope is a true success story. I was glad to see that you talked to the neighborhood about this, and the neighborhood is in support of it. And so I just want to say that upfront. Thank you, Marcos.
And this is another example of the city, county, and the state all working together to create more housing together because the city did provide some funds into the project, and then us through our tax exemption and private activity bonds with the state as well. So this is another example of us coalescing together to solve the housing crisis that's in our community.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Tom Manchek, Thomas Development Co., my business address is 420 West Main Street, Boise, Idaho. Here with my partner Laura Chavez, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Chavez?
Chair Baca, Commissioners, I just want to say thank you for your time. Thank you for your review and analysis. I'm also very proud to be part of this collaboration and project, having been a Borkeña and also New Mexican who grew up in homelessness and watched my elders struggle between tribal housing, being kicked off the reservation, and then experiencing homelessness here locally as a child. Definitely drew my interest in housing. I've been in housing and social services for nearly 20 years, five of which have been at the Mortgage Finance Authority, and I've seen firsthand how these low-income housing tax credits can really spur development projects like this that are badly needed, particularly in Bernalillo County, where we're currently looking at seniors, just around 70%, of which are under the area median income. So I thank you for your time and consideration, and we'll also stand for any questions.
Thank you so much. I'll move approval, and we'll go to discussion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the Commission? Seeing none, I will call for a roll call vote, please.
Chair Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
So called.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Look forward to good things.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. C, item 8D, Metropolitan Detention Center, McLendon Proposed Stipulated Medical Care Order. Madam Clerk, please issue a resolution number.
Yes, ma'am. FR 2023-76. Oops, yes, 76.
Thank you. And I'll turn it over to our attorney, Ken Martinez.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. And we've had a briefing on this, so I won't belabor it too much. We're lucky to have with us Taylor Ron, who stayed for our meeting to present this to us now. And I understand there may be some amendments, so we're also prepared to work on those together, too.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and other county commissioners. This comes before the Board on regards to an emergency motion for order to show cause why defendants should not pay monetary penalties for violating the Court's consent decree regarding medical care, which was filed in the McLendon versus City of Albuquerque et al. lawsuit, which is an institutional reform lawsuit filed regarding the Metropolitan Detention Center and governs conditions of confinement at the Metropolitan Detention Center. But we have before and presented as part of the agenda a proposed resolution of the plaintiffs and plaintiffs interveners' motion for order to show cause, which has several features. As Mr. Martinez alluded, this was discussed in a closed litigation meeting. And for the reasons set forth in the closed litigation meeting, I present this to the Board for approval. And again, this settlement agreement or this order would resolve the pending motion in the McLendon lawsuit. And I stand for any questions the Board may have.
Thank you. Commissioner Olivas?
Make a motion to adopt.
It's been moved and seconded, and?
And then, Madam Chair, I'd like to offer an amendment on page four, number five. Alter the first two sentences to read as follows. No later than June 21, 2023, county defendant will allow and assist qualified Bernalillo County employees to work overtime at the MDC detoxification units. County defendant will expedite training and security clearance for county employees wishing to work overtime at MDC to ensure that any Bernalillo County employees who wish to work overtime at MDC are able to do so within 60 days of notifying the county they would like to work at MDC. So moved.
And I'll second the amendment. Any questions, discussion? Commissioner Benson?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Olivas, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the order in front of me. Can you review again what the amendment is there for the overtime work?
The amendment removes language that specifies particular employees or classes of employees that would be potentially recruited to assist with this effort and instead broadens that to just read that qualified county employees will be offered the opportunity to work overtime at this facility.
Okay, so who would be the, like, in your mind, who would be the qualified? And what's the purpose of that removal?
I would, Commissioner Benson, Madam Chair, I don't know if I could defer to counsel on that to answer a little bit more there.
And please, Mr. Martinez, since I missed the closed session, I apologize. Wasn't able to attend, but yeah, you could explain that. Because I've had concerns with this language as well. I just want to make sure my concerns are addressed.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner. I'll start and then hand it off to Ms. Ron. The question here is trying to get healthcare professionals, paramedics, into the jail and how that would happen. Everybody that works for Bernalillo County in this capacity, for the most part, are members of collective bargaining units and have, you know, the scope of work already well-defined for them. This is a volunteer request, but we didn't want to limit it to one or two areas that may come in and help with these type of things. I think the Commission had thought it would be a better idea to say any qualified throughout. And then Ms. Ron can explain specifically what the target for this is, and it's looking at that very specific issue of detoxification. But if I could defer to Ms. Ron on the qualifications?
That's all right, Ms. Ron?
Thank you. Commissioner Benson, to answer your question, the skill set that is looking for in these volunteer overtime positions is specifically to assist in MDC's detox unit. So we are looking for detox techs, individuals who could take vital signs and perform rounds, as well as EMTs who could also fulfill those functions. One of the main concerns identified in the motion for order to show cause was medical care in the detox unit. So that's specifically the skill set we're looking for in resolving this motion.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. And actually, maybe you can answer this as well. Because I think fire, the fire department is, I mean, they're tops in terms of being first responders. But at the same time, UNM, I know, has the medical contract, and so it feels like UNM should be, UNMH should be the provider for these caregivers. So would that, would this language then incentivize UNMH to do that? Or is it really still putting the onus on Bernalillo County?
Well, Commissioner Benson, this motion is specifically addressed at the interim period. As you know, the transition to UNMH is still several weeks away. And so by utilizing current county resources, the idea is that these resources would be more immediately available than the 27th, when UNMH takes over. These are just supplementary resources. Again, this would be volunteer overtime by current county employees. They will not be required to work these shifts at MDC. Ultimately, you are correct, Commissioner Benson, that UNMH, when it assumes the contract for medical and mental health care at MDC, will be responsible for staffing all of these positions.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. Any other questions on the amendment? Commissioner Olivas?
I just wanted to kind of close and wrap it up by saying, you know, that my concern here, and, you know, one of the reasons for this was to make sure that we're respectful of our various bargaining units and our various groups of employees, and not single out one individual unit or one individual group of employees. And even though this is voluntary, you know, an ask from the county commission, which is what we're doing right now, is a strong ask for our employees who work very hard every day in every department across the county, but in particular first responders like our firefighters and our behavioral health techs at the Department of Behavioral Health Services, as this was previously drafted to single out those two groups. And so I just think it's important that we broaden the language to make sure that this applies to all county employees who may have the correct skill set and be appropriate to fill in these roles, and not single out those particular groups that, while many of them probably do have the right skill set, it's important that we recognize their right to collectively bargain and their right to adequate representation and make sure that their skill set is properly defined and properly utilized according to, you know, our labor relations ordinance and all the things that go into that. So that's Commissioner Benson, I hope. That, in addition to these, the answers by our attorneys can help explain the reasoning for this.
So I'll call, roll call vote for the amendment.
Chair Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
So called.
And so we go back to the motion on the bill, la, 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 FR 2023-76. Roll call vote, please.
Chair Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
So called.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for your time.
Item F, Procurement and Business Services Purchasing Procedures. Madam Clerk, can you please issue a resolution number?
Yes, ma'am. AR 2023-77.
Thank you. And again, we have Lisa Sideway, Viola Cunningham.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. I'm Viola Cunningham, the Procurement and Business Services Department Director. Presenting the agenda item titled Purchasing Procedures. The motions are as follows. One, rescind administrative resolution AR 2018-49, which is due to expire June 30 of 2023. Secondly, approve administrative resolution to reestablish the county's approval process, settlement authority, monetary settlement authority, monetary signature authority, and required reporting. In brief summary, the proposed resolution reestablishes the county manager's authority to place further restrictions on the county's procurement process by establishing procurement policy, procedures, and administrative instructions. The resolution authorizes the county manager to create and appoint a committee to evaluate and recommend approvals or disapprovals of all changes, change orders for construction projects and establishes reporting requirements. The proposed resolution also reestablishes the county manager's signature authority to approve line item transfers within funds, financial resolutions up to $300,000, settlement agreements up to $50,000 per party per matter, and any county purchases, agreements, or contracts for goods or services detailed in the contract listing in any fiscal year's operating budget. Staff is requesting approval for the Commission on the proposal, which will better streamline the county manager's signature authority to two monetary thresholds from four different limits. In addition, staff is recommending these following changes to the county manager's approval authority and are amended as follows. Currently, the county manager has the approval authority for financial resolutions up to $300,000. There will be no change in that amount. However, we are requesting that the purchase of purchases, agreements, and contracts up to $300,000 excluding New Mexico grocery receipts tax, which is currently up to $200,000. The next proposal is multi-year and multi-award contracts or agreements where the annual expenditures are up to $300,000 excluding NMGRT in total if the original contract or agreement was approved by the Board. It's currently up to $200, I mean, $200,000. The staff recommends leaving this amount up to $500,000 where it relates to construction-related contracts and the related professional services to construction-related contracts. So that amount would still remain at $500,000. However, we are wanting to include some clarifying language that makes it clear that when something is approved outside of the, in another manner that comes before Commission and you've already approved that it has the authority for the county manager to assign, we want there not to be any conflict in this AR. And so that reads, for construction projects exceeding $5 million excluding New Mexico grocery receipts tax, in total, the county manager will act on the behalf of the Commission in approving a change order, amendment, or aggregate of all change orders and amendments not exceeding an amount equal to 10% of the original contract amount, except when the Commission has granted the county manager the authority to approve change orders and amendments on specific agenda items. The next is real estate matters up to $300,000, which currently is at $150,000. And then the resolution also includes a provision to require a quarterly report to the Board, which is currently a monthly report. So with this, I stand for questions, if you have any at this time.
Any questions? Okay, seeing an item of approval.
Second.
So moved and seconded, roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Chair Baca?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
So called.
Thank you both for your very important work.
Thank you.
Very difficult. Okay. On approvals, we're on formerly 9B, Commissioners Behavioral Health Systems Working Group Recommendations. And I wanted to call to the front Mr. Karpov and Mr. Barndollar. I just wanted to say that this, again, is something that I am so proud to have helped sponsor and the work that this citizen working group did, coming together with some very difficult requests and some very important recommendations that have come out of this in a timely way. And I really wanted to thank each of you, the entire working group, for just stellar work on this. And thank you, Commissioner Olivas, for co-sponsoring and county manager for moving this forward. So I don't know who wants to start, but please go.
Well, thank you, Chair Baca and Commissioners. This was actually a kind of a pleasure. The, the eight members of the working group are all extremely qualified and they represent a wide range of interests. There were state, state, state-level experience. There was clinical experience. There was county staff experience. There's experience from the Behavioral Health Initiative and Steering Committee. So it was quite a comprehensive range of skills that were represented. Everyone came together immediately to figure out how to move, how to make recommendations that would move this initiative forward. So I just want to emphasize the qualifications, the competence, and the relationships that immediately were formed. And so it was quite a positive experience for me. For those who don't know me, pardon me, I didn't introduce myself. My name's Tim Karpov. I'm an independent planner and facilitator, live in the South Valley in District Two. And so I was very glad to have been engaged in this. Terms of the recommendations, there are six primary recommendations, but I think they all are nested within the first one that will be listed. And that is to create a true system of behavioral health care. The idea is that however useful the monies have, the services have been provided by the monies expended, however useful those have been, the idea of going forward, we should organize not around trying to fill individual gaps or to provide just more services. We should organize around building a true behavioral health system. I think the recommendations accord or congruent with the ATAB report that was brought before you earlier and I think with the housing recommendations on Section Eight that Ms. Valdez was bringing forward. So I think there's a great amount of congruence, but it all is rested or nested in the idea of a true system of care. Anyway, I could go on, but I will stop there. Thank you very much for asking me to help out. But I think these are two of the people who really did the work. So, Mr. Barndollar?
Thank you, Mr. Karpov, Mr. Barndollar.
Chair, excuse me, Chair Baca, members of the Commission. As the sole member of the BHI Volunteer Corps involved in this, I also want to thank you for putting this together. I've been involved with BHI for about five years now and it's given me a great opportunity to see some amazing work. But as you brought us together and indicated, there are things that we could do to improve the Behavioral Health Initiative itself. That's one piece of the overall behavioral health system that Tim was just talking about. And we, we recognize that if we take full advantage of this opportunity to elevate the work and the productivity of the Behavioral Health Initiative, it's going to drive that system and make it even better and actually bring it together, as we know, there really don't have one yet. So I think we're leading the charge to make that happen. So thank you for, for allowing me and for allowing us to, to get together and do this work.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Pam Acosta, Senior Manager with Behavioral Health. I just wanted to express my gratitude for being selected to serve as a voting member. It gave us the opportunity to look inward, see where we needed to make some improvements. And I think more importantly, to get the support that we need to continue the good work that we're doing, but in a streamlined fashion. I think that the Behavioral Health Initiative served its purpose in Phase One. We are now at a Phase Two. The wellness, the overall wellness check that everyone talked about was necessary. And I think we're on the right path. I'm very thankful for my colleagues that served on the, on the panel with us and helped us to really formulate some ideas and focus on some areas that we've identified as well. And now we just have some, some backing. And so I just really want to thank you for the opportunity, appreciate it.
Thank you, Pam. Commissioner Olivas?
Blown away by the, the work product that, that you all produced and, and just the synergy when we had our, you know, nearly four-hour-long working meeting talking about these recommendations. Just the passion and the knowledge of your group just speaks to the effectiveness and the fact that we have a really comprehensive work product in front of us that charts a path forward for this Commission and for this community. So again, huge kudos to all of you here today and those that, that served that are not, to our county manager for, for bringing Mr. Karpov in and, and helping us put this all together. And to our Chair and our Vice Chair, who actually were responsible for, you know, vetting this list. You, you know, that, that all of us Commissioners and county manager, everybody had, you know, input on, on who they wanted on there. And you all had to make the, the tough decision of making this a group of experts, but a group that could work. Because we know that if we had 50 people on there, they all might be qualified, but we probably wouldn't have this kind of concise work product. And what I take away from it, not to, to be duplicative here, but is that we've done an excellent, well, we've done a very good job of standing up individual resources here and there, whether that's the Tiny Home Village, that's the Resource Reentry Center, our Wellness Motel, different resources that we've stood up as a county, our CARES Campus. But the biggest gap, and it's a critical gap, is the inability to tie those resources together. So that when someone walks into one of those, it might not be the right place. It might not be the service they need. But they're instantly connected to the link in the chain. And maybe it's not one of our links, right? That's another thing that this acknowledges here. This might be linking folks to the city, to the state, to Medicaid, to housing. There's so many other pieces of this puzzle that we have to focus on filling in that system and, and that, that statement of a no wrong door approach. 100% agree that that is the direction we have to move full speed ahead. Because in large part, I think we've actually built out a lot of the resources. I'm not going to say we have everything we need. There are gaps. But I'm not sure we can actually tell how effective the system is until we actually build it. Once we connect everything together, we can actually see if we need more shelter beds, if we need more supportive housing. I think we know the answer, but we have to make those connections. And I'm just so grateful that our Behavioral Health Initiative staff, Gilbert Ramirez at the city, and so many of our providers and, and the state, other, other folks have bought into this by participating in this work group. And I think it speaks well to the future. And I'm excited to be on this Commission at this time because even though this is a daunting challenge, it's also an amazing opportunity to chart a path forward that builds a system that treats the most vulnerable among us with the care and dignity and respect that they deserve. So I really appreciate all your work and just commend the group.
Thank you, Commissioner. Before I move on to you, Vice Chair and Commissioner Benson, I wanted to ask the county manager to read the names of this fabulous working group. I neglected to do that at the beginning because it does come down to this volunteer group that met every week for, right? I mean, you know, we put the-
14 weeks in a row.
14 weeks in a row and have come up with a very good, you know, direction to us, which we are accepting tonight, which we will then move forward to with a timeline on, on next steps and where we're going to actually complete these, these efforts or continue, I guess, these efforts. But county manager, maybe you could read those names and then we'll go to you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, it's, I'm very proud to be able to read off the names. So again, facilitator, Tim Karpov, thank you for agreeing to help us out with this initiative in a huge way. Clay Campbell, thank you. And Julianne, thank you for attending all the meetings and making sure that we supported the, the hard-working, amazing working group. So we have Bryce Pittinger, Dr. William Hastings Weis, Lisa Simpson, Michael Barndollar, Tanya, Tanya Tijerina, Pam Acosta, Gilbert Ramirez, and Fram Martinez Romero. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Yes, Commissioner or Vice Chair Barboah?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for naming out those folks, so important. People gave more of their time to really support all of our families and communities. And in a time when, you know, New Mexico in itself is, has a history of substance use and substance use disorder that is often multigenerational within families that plagues us for a long time. And it's not surprising as we're a border community, we're a low-income state. So, but the more recent folks, I'm sure, have heard and seen about the opioid settlements on the news, right? But to add to it, you know, Big Pharma, pharmaceutical companies have been preying on our communities, literally using that data against us to create lots of harm, lots of death, and the destruction of whole families and people's lives. And so I just, I know that these folks came together. I think we have such strong recommendations. It is ever-evolving. And as we continue to be good ambassadors for this, for these dollars that the voters have voted for, in addition to our dollars, I love that some of the recommendations were about how we leverage those dollars, including federal government matches that are three to one for every dollar, how we use that intentionally, really in reparations for the crimes that, that like big pharmaceutical companies have done to our families, but also just this true dis-ease of substance use disorder. And so I think everybody, for their care, the recommendations are so solid, provide us such a good roadmap, roadmap. And there's so much to dive into there. I, I hope to be a good steward of that. And, but I think to Mr. Kopra's point, right? The system of care is really the way that, the next big hope for how we connect those pieces and hopefully have some, some well-played systems that, that pick up our care and doesn't, don't leave people out in the cold. And then last, I just would say that, right? We, we continue to move forward and now there's greater partnerships. I think this is what, I hope, one of the outcomes of this collaboration is that we, there's more collaborative ways, more picking up the phone, talking to our partners at the city, calling in the state when we're guessing and really pulling on those resources. We often say we're not the only ones. I do think we're the leader in it. We're the ones with the more resources, possibly even more than the state. But it doesn't mean that we can't partner and make sure we're pulling in all the resources and leveraging it. I'm excited for this report and just superbly grateful for the folks that worked hard. Like you said, every week, they chose to go to every week. And they met the demand. And thanks again to Mr. Tim Kopra for excellent facilitation skills and for the rest of the county team that really helped make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And yes, thank you, Mr. Karpov. And, and also Ms. Acosta and Mr. Barndollar, thank you both. You both spoke at the presentation. But I also want to extend my gratitude to the entire Committee. I can't imagine how much work and effort went into this. But then listening to you, it sounds like you all gelled really well, whether it was county representation or city representation. I think, I think this was a beautiful example of, especially with the city and county working together to complement each other's strengths. And I think what Commissioner Olivas also spoke to is how, how huge this issue is. And Commissioner Barboah as well, and how complicated it is and how, you know, as the county ourselves, we've, we've stumbled in our efforts. And I also want to- And I also want to, you know, tip my hat to County Manager Boris Baca for being so in favor of this initiative to help, help us do better at providing the care that we need to. And we've gotten some black eyes so far. And this isn't one of them. This is a trophy, for sure. It's just a first step, but I look forward to seeing the good work that comes from this. And I think what, you know, this is kind of the, the start to the whole system, the glue, I think, that can help tie all the different pieces together that just wasn't there before. So thank you, everybody who's been involved in this. And Mr. Karpov, again, thank you. You, you're a skilled facilitator to kind of, you know, get everybody working well together. And I think this is a good result or a good example of positive results. So I, I too am excited about the results that we're going to see from this. And we've got a long road to hope. And, but I know we can do it. I know we can do it. So well done, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the Behavioral Health Systems Working Group recommendations as presented to the commission at the June 7th, 2023 Behavioral Health Work Study Session. And secondly, to direct the county manager to develop a plan for the implementation of these recommendations to be presented to the commission for consideration at the August 22nd, 2023 Administrative Meeting.
Second.
Second. By, Vice Chair, I'm going to give that to you, Vice Chair Barboah. You had your hand up a moment ago. That was to second. Any other comments on that? If not, thank you again, all of you. And we ask for a roll call vote, please.
Chair Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
So called.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chair, if I could, just a point of privilege, real quickly, just say, I've been, I've been, you know, fortunate to work with a hard group of mostly moms that have lost loved ones to the current fentanyl crisis. And through that work, they started the Keep N M Alive website and have done so much outreach. And we all wear these little bracelets that, that the counties provided. And you wouldn't believe, I, I was, I thought they were maybe joking, but they were saying like everywhere they go, they offer it to someone and every single, and I was having dinner with them the other night and every, they, you know, one of the moms sort of turned to our waitress and was like, here, have a fentanyl bracelet for fentanyl awareness. And the woman started talking to us and she started crying that she had lost a dear friend, that her, her son's father was also struggling with fentanyl use. And, and they just said that that's, happens everywhere they go, right? And there's so much between the shame and stigma that keeps us from talking out loud. And sometimes it just takes that little bit so people can reach out for the help. So I just didn't want to miss out the opportunity for anyone who's listening and needs to hear it, 988, keep, keepnmalive.com. There's a bunch of resources there. Call 988 if needed. They are 24 hours for not just folks that are themselves suffering, but if you have a family member, loved one that's suffering and you want resources, go there. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Okay. Item C, Capital Improvement Program, multi-award request for proposal for nonprofit organizations and service in Burnley County. Chief of Government Affairs Kathy Court, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. My name is Kathy Court and I am the Chief of Government Affairs. This action item regards a multi-award request for proposals, which is a new process that we implemented for 2023 state and New Mexico legislative appropriations that are intended for nonprofit organizations in Burnley County and that we must procure. This RFP is a result of increased scrutiny from the State Department of Finance and Administration and the State Board of Finance. And it is also recognized by DFA as a method of procurement. So coupled with new updated documents that DFA wants us to be providing them as fiscal agent of these appropriations, our grant execution process should run a lot more smoother and we should be able to get DFA closure and clearance more quickly. We have a total of 15 nonprofit finalists who received a total of 13.8 million in appropriations designated for nonprofit services and organizations. Of those, seven of the appropriations total 1.3 million and they must be expended by June 30th of 2024. If approved by the commission, the Capital Improvement Program team will be able to start working on the required third-party agreements and associated documentation. Once those agreements and associated documents are approved by the DFA, the DFA will execute those grants and then we can award the nonprofits with their legislative appropriations and thus begin the expenditure process. So with that, I stand for any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the explanation. And any questions for Ms. Court? Commissioner Olivas.
I just, you know, wanted to commend the, the staff here at the county and our partners at the nonprofits. Like I had highlighted earlier, in the, the money that we brought in for capital for our county facilities, this brings in state money, purely state money. There is no county match here. In some cases, you know, we may contribute to a project, but that is case by case. And so this is just a great way to, to bring in state funds. And so, you know, great work to our, to our staff for working on this. But I, I do say that with, with a caveat that I do think as, as a county and more broadly as a state, we've got to take a look at this issue of, of how we adequately and properly fund nonprofits, because they do provide absolutely essential services in our community and communities across the state. But we are at a point where so many of these providers exist, their, their needs are so great. And we also have great needs here at Burnley County, whether it's in our Parks Department, Public Works, Behavioral Health. And I think we are coming to a point where in certain cases, we are competing with nonprofits for allocations that are limited by the state. And we really need to work with our state legislators and our lobbyists and, and our entire team to shine a spotlight on this, on the fact that there is this tremendous need. And the system we currently have to address that need is haphazard at best. And our staff are doing the absolute best that they can to meet that need. But I think that, you know, one of the ideas I've heard that I really support is, is a revolving loan fund, a forgivable loan fund at the state level that would allow nonprofits to apply and receive grants directly from the state, taking out the, the middleman here at the county that can, you know, in some cases be blamed for things that may be their fault, may be not their fault. But it's, I think this is one of the most important pieces that this commission and our entire lobbying team and our legislators here from this region, but frankly, across the state, need to look at, because we need to support our nonprofits, but we also need to support our county facilities. And they shouldn't be competing with each other because they're all important.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. And thank you, Clay, for the work that you've done together. And I know that you're passing a baton and this is a good thing. We believe in succession planning around here, so thanks.
Thank you.
And so I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Chair Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Aye, yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
So called.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. Thank you for coming and sticking with us on this late evening. We move on to Human Resources Collective Bargaining Agreement. HR Director Bernadette Perez.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name's Bernadette Perez. I'm the HR Director here at the county. Human Resources is seeking commission approval of the negotiated changes to the AFME Council 18 Local 2499 Collective Bargaining Agreement. Negotiations between Burnley County and AFME Council 18 Local 2499 commenced on May 16th, 2023, and we reached tentative agreement on May 24th, 2023. The union ratified the contract with a majority of votes, 75 to 1, on June 19th, 2023. This is a one-year contract expiring on June 30, 2024. Some of the highlighted changes are incorporating multiple MOUs that are currently in place. They include significant wage increases that occurred in 2022. We made some changes and added some steps for longevity, starting with year five through years 18 and 18 plus. We added differential pay for swing shift, graveyard shift, weekend day, swing and graveyard shifts. And I would like to recognize the management negotiating team. We have our chief negotiator, Deana Holcomb, DCM Shirley Reagan, Warden Jason Jones, I think he's still here, DCM Greg Perez, my labor relations manager, Don Hill, and myself. I would also like to thank the county manager and AFME Council 18 Local 2499 Union negotiating team members for their collaboration in reaching this agreement. It is my understanding that there is a union representative in attendance in the event he or she has anything to add.
I don't. I don't have any-
We're glad you hear them.
But it was a pleasure. Everybody, I think we all did a really good job. And like she's saying, this one-year contract is actually probably two years worth of contracts because of all the MOUs that date back probably to 2021, like early 2021. So we did make a couple of changes, but collectively, I think everybody's working to get MDC in a better place. It's extremely short-staffed, everybody knows, and we're doing everything we can collectively, together, not as a union and as management or administration. I mean, everybody's working together to try to get to the same goal. So with that, that's all I have. I, I hope you guys vote to, to say yes on this.
Thank you. I stand for any questions.
Before we get to that, I just want to make a motion to approve the AFME Local 2499 MDC contract. Oh, I'm sorry, that, yeah. Is that right?
Second.
Yep. Any discussion or questions or, yeah, sorry.
Madam Chair, just really quick, I'm just really glad and grateful for the good relationship that we've worked very, very hard to establish with the union. And Lieutenant Speedy, you were part of it too. You're part of that and making it work in our, our, our management team. And also Warden Jones, what a difference you've made, really, truly. And thank you for reaching out to the union and working with them. That's what we wanted. And thank you to the commission for your support. So anyway, so I hope that you all will approve this, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager. Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Perez and, and everybody that's, I'm just very excited that the lieutenant came up here and talked about that collaborative atmosphere. We know the challenges out there. This was the first facility that Commissioner Baca and I went out and toured before we were ever sworn in or, or official in our roles. It's that important. This is a, a critical piece of our public safety apparatus that, that we operate here at the county and that the county commission's responsible for. So I am just, you know, very supportive of this and, and the fact that we have both sides' management or, or warden and as well as our, our leadership at the union and everybody here at the county supporting this tells me it's, it's, it's the right move. Of course, you know, I always wish we could do more for people that are working under incredibly difficult conditions, whether that's our corrections professionals, our firefighters or our sheriff's deputies, you name it, across the board, there's a lot of people doing important, difficult work. But at the end of the day, we only have so much money that goes so far. But really glad that this is, is a compromise that everybody feels good about.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Benson, have a comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I just want to say thank you to MDC. Thank you for everything you do. You're a key component for our public safety. And if you aren't represented well, then, then you can't do your jobs well. And if you can't do your jobs well, that, that directly impacts public safety. And if public safety isn't being served well, then we as commission aren't doing our jobs. So just thank you. Please pass the message on to, to everybody down at MDC, how we appreciate you and you're an integral part of our entire public safety efforts. So I'm glad we've got a, a good agreement going and thank you for the meeting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? If not, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Chair Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
So called.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. So we have two discussion items. Ten A, Commissioners, on the city-county government consolidation. We, we started out this meeting with a, a brief conversation that ended up being a much more in-depth one, but I think that it's worthy of discussion. And we don't want to keep people too late, but I think that it's, as you can tell from some of the, the comments that have already been made, people are passionate about it. They want to talk about this. This is not to be decided tonight and, and by any means, but I wanted to turn it over to Commissioner Olivas and then I'll, I'll say a couple of words and we'll go with that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know it's, it's late and, you know, we've passed through a, a lot of our, our, you know, really important business, but I do think this is an important item for us to have on our radar and I wanted to bring this forward. So I'll try to be brief. But as, to reiterate what the chair said, I think it's important to start this conversation off by saying it is truly a conversation. My intent in asking for this to be placed on the agenda is to start a conversation, a community-wide conversation here on this commission with our communities and with our partners at the city and all of the players involved in there. And, you know, a key component is of course our employees, both at the county and at the city. So again, nothing will be decided tonight. This is, this is just an opportunity for us to talk about this. Our partners at the city are already talking about this. It's been brought up in roundabout ways at, at multiple council meetings. They'll be discussing again tomorrow night, making a change in the way the city government operates. And several counselors have suggested that perhaps that's not the right change to make. Perhaps the right change is to actually talk about city-county consolidation. So to be clear, this, this is not something that I am advocating for a particular position or a particular change in government, but rather my intent here is, is to bring this up to, to start that conversation about what this could look like, what should this look like if it was to move forward? And ultimately, as has been done in the past, that product is presented to the voters if we choose to move forward, both at the city and the county, to ask the voters whether that is the right direction to take. But as we were going through our, our mini discussion earlier about this, what, what really struck me is, is the fact that I believe it's, it's our role as commissioners and all of our public servants to represent all of our constituents and act in the best interests of the whole of the community. And sometimes that's going to require tough choices for us. Because as, as was mentioned, you know, many residents of unincorporated Burnley County are, are in general happy with the services they receive from the county. And I wanted to, to throw out a few figures here that I think illustrate why. Start out, the five of us, the five commissioners up here online, we represent all of the residents of Burnley County, not just the residents of our unincorporated portions, though as I can attest, my office gets almost no communication with our constituents that live in the city limits, which is 85% of my constituents. They do not contact us. They contact the city of Albuquerque. So we only hear from residents of the unincorporated county, county, or virtually only hear from those residents. To, to paint a picture in numbers, the city of Albuquerque has 562,599 residents. The unincorporated areas of the county have 113,845 residents. That's five times larger roughly than the city of Albuquerque is by population than the county of Burnley. And we represent that 562,000 as well as the 113,000. The nine members of council do not represent those 113. I'll fully acknowledge that. The other figure that I think should be considered in the context of, of those two numbers is the county budget that, that we recently approved was in the neighborhood of $975 million. The city budget that was recently approved is in the neighborhood of 1.4 billion, which seems a lot bigger, but actually that's only about $400 million larger than- which seems a lot bigger, but actually, that's only about $400 million larger than the county budget. So one of the things that I see there very quickly is that the numbers don't match. We are asking our city residents to subsidize services in unincorporated areas. That doesn't mean that I want to take services or that I'm in any way advocating that those areas don't deserve those services. All areas deserve equal access to equal services. These are residents of the city of Albuquerque are paying county taxes, but in some cases, they may not be receiving the same level of services as our more satisfied constituents in unincorporated areas. I would argue that perhaps that's not fair. Perhaps that's something we should look to address, whether that's through consolidation or whether that's through individual initiatives, like we've undertaken, just in this short commission term, on housing, on behavioral health. I'm not prescribing which of those is right, but I would strongly advocate that the five of us represent all residents of Burnaleo County. And just because we are not hearing from that, in my case, 85%, it does not mean that they don't deserve access to public safety, fire, police, EMS. It doesn't mean that the city should be on their own. And huge commendation to our sheriff and our county manager, our BCFR staff. There's often that spirit of cooperation, and it happens more often than not. But we have to ask ourselves the question, is this fair? And is it efficient? Is it efficient to have two parks departments with two different policies, competing for resources, competing for labor? Is it efficient to have two police departments, again, competing for labor? Much of what we heard in our budget discussions was centered around getting parity with the city of Albuquerque. How nice would it be to be in a situation where we were not competing with our friend, with our ally? We serve the same group of constituents. So this has been tried in the past. Commissions have been formed to detail this, and I just think it's critical that we restart the conversation to ask ourselves, what is the most efficient way to provide critical government services to our community, to our taxpayers, in a way that's equitable and that recognizes that as elected representatives, we must act in the best interest of the whole, not of a specific interest group or a specific vocal group that may not necessarily represent the entire community?
Thank you, Commissioner Olivas. Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Commissioner Olivas, for bringing this up for discussion. And yes, I do feel passionate about this, but I'm always open to have a conversation, always. So let's have it. I would push back, though, about the representation. I mean, your numbers are accurate, for sure, but the county does spend a lot of money in the city of Albuquerque. Some of the districts spend more inside the city of Albuquerque, and that's probably appropriate. But if you live in the city of Albuquerque, which I know you all do, then it makes sense. I live in the county outside of the city of Albuquerque, and I see the benefits of it. The residents that live outside of the city are the minority voice, and please don't ignore the minority. Just because they're the minority doesn't mean they don't have a perspective, or they don't have a point of view that matters. And personally, even though I do live in the county, I represent my entire district, whether it's outside the city or inside. In fact, I actually gave a massive amount of money that was allocated to us through ARPA. My portion of it was to the Bear Canyon, no, I'm sorry, the North Domingo Baca Swimming Pool Project that Commissioner Basson is funding. So, and I partner with councillor Lewis, who's on the west side of my district. So my my heart is definitely to represent the entire county, whether they live inside the city or not. However, there are there are things that we do really well, one of which is our form of government. We've got five commissioners. There's not one person who can veto the will of the five. So we've got an equal representation of democracy, representative of democracy, that I know the city is discussing this. I don't know if that's going to pass. Like you said, Commissioner Olivas, they're saying, no, let's keep our strong mayor form of government and just consolidate it to give a strong mayor even more authority, which I don't think that's a good move. Now, if the city of Albuquerque were to move to a more equal representation like the county does, where each councillor has an equal vote, then that would change the discussion, for sure. We could talk about efficiencies all day long, but you can't talk about efficiencies without looking how the two governments are run. You just can't. Burnaleo County runs very well. We're responsible with our funds. We're responsible to our taxpayers, all of our taxpayers, including the city residents. We're responsible to all of them. We have the highest bond rating possible because we hold that responsibility, the five of us, the five of us do. And it's different it's different when that form of government isn't the same. So just because you live inside the city and not outside of the city, please don't neglect that perspective and say, well, it's our hard decision. Well, that is kind of an easy decision when you're not taking that perspective, you know? So I think I would say that I've got one of the largest populations outside of the city, but I believe Commissioner Kessada has me beat. Commissioner Olivas, I believe you're probably in third place with a large percentage of your voters in the east mountains, but it might be Commissioner Baca. I'm not sure. But I can't I can't neglect my residents who don't support this. And happy to have a discussion, talk about pros and cons, and I think we should do more of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. Vice Chair Barboa.
Yeah, again, I'm just thankful for the rich discussion. I don't know. I mean, I'm happy to hear the benefits of consolidation, or if, I think I heard Commissioner Olivas say that we don't know, not actually just saying consolidation is the only option on the table. I think we should explore. When I think of our services, I think of that little pie chart that we get to see all the time about how so much of, like, the tax revenue that we bring in, or GRT funds, or all that goes to MDC, goes to APS, goes to these other places that definitely impact the whole entire, all the jurisdiction within the county. And so I do think we also do so much to benefit the whole thing. I think this is worth a conversation. I don't really know or understand it enough to suggest a resolution or a solution, but I do think it's worth talking about, right? Because I think the barriers that I can name for a person who has my community fully in the county is that those folks also don't fully in the city and the county, because we're all in the county, is that, right, that there are barriers to when we are able, or if a commissioner that represents my district wants to put resources, there are always barriers into what you're allowed to and how we have to have agreements with the city, and we can't work on that road because it might be overstepping boundaries for that road that they might need to work on, or, and then it brings in utilities and a bunch of other players, right? But I think everything is worth a solution. I think part of the issue might be that we're, we have to be willing to say that the whole entire thing is the county and within reason and responsibly, we're gonna not let those barriers impede the services that we do offer to the whole entire county, including the folks. I mean, I have family that live in the incorporated area. That's where Barbo is. That's where I come from. So I care about, and I know for a long time, the story was that they weren't getting enough resources. They were left out, right? And I think that that feels like there's been a big shift and that the county has really prioritized, probably justifiably, those folks that are in the unincorporated area because of that reason. But I think they've done a good job, and we are doing a good job as a county and really making sure that those voices don't go unheard. So I do think there's, there are some other ways. I don't know what the solution is, but I do think there's some conversation to be had about solutions that can both take down the barriers and make sure we're, we are being equal in how we distribute resources across the whole county.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And I'll close this by, my comments on here, and I would challenge all of us to take a look at the two links, the two documents that are attached to this agenda item, this discussion item, because this isn't, I don't know, I might have misspoken that we're starting the discussion. This is a continuation of a discussion that has been had by our community most recently back in the early 2000s. And we are in a different place now. We have a public safety crisis that we're trying to deal with, that I think we could handle better, that challenge, better together. We have a housing crisis that we're dealing with, that I think we can handle better together as a city and county. We have behavioral health initiative that we're talking about, that we are working toward handling better together. And then I would also say, we have quality of life issues, as we discussed in our budget, of a regional open space system that we can do better together. So the whole idea here is not pitting one government against the other, and I'm not saying anybody, you know, is really saying that, but I just think we have so much more strength if we work better together and we continue this discussion, which I'm sure we will, because we have heard so many people talk about it tonight in those terms. And if you look at the link to your document, and I'll say that to the public, too, on page 17 of one of those is the former chair of the Consolidation Citizen Volunteer Commission was my dad, Pat Baca. He served as a city councillor for 16 years, a county commissioner in this seat for four years. I think that there is a bridge when you talk about folks that have had the experience in both governmental entities, that we're all the same family, really. Commissioner Barboa in the South Valley, and then now in the majority city, county commission district. We have so many commonalities that that's what we should be looking toward and embracing. So I'll just end with that. I think that this is to be continued, and I thank everyone for their discussion. So I want to move on to the last item, discussion item, 10B Fire and Rescue. Fire Chief Perez, thank you for your patience, Chief Perez.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I have about an hour and a half-long presentation for you this evening on a very important topic. And all jokes aside, I am here to talk about an extremely important topic, being 4th of July and fireworks safety. I will tell you that we are prepared this year. We are blessed and very fortunate to have received a lot of rain and a lot of moisture in the winter and fall leading up to that, which has allowed us to come out of what was an extreme drought. However, when coming out of an extreme or recognized extreme drought condition, our ability to enact such things as fireworks bans also goes away. So this year, which is the first time in a really long time in most of my career, I would say, we are not putting forward a 4th of July fireworks ban. Now, I caution folks when I say that, because there is still law out there that dictates what can and can't be utilized in your Freedom Fourth celebration. So the best advice that I will give to anyone out there is purchase any fireworks within Burnaleo County, and you will be using legal fireworks. If you venture outside of Burnaleo County, that will not necessarily be true. So that is my best and easiest advice, is telling everyone listening to buy within Burnaleo County, and you will be abiding by the law and utilizing legal fireworks. If you don't, you do have that chance of having SO or APD coming by and fining you up to $300 for illegal fireworks. You also have the potential of starting a fire that you could have the burden of paying for all of the costs that it takes to put that fire out. So there's a lot to it. Again, 4th of July is a great time to celebrate, but also a very dangerous time as well, if we're not, if not done carefully. So Burnaleo County, Fire and Rescue is definitely prepared. We'll have extra units up, not the 4th of July specifically that we're concerned with, it's the weekend leading up to it. Being that the 4th of July actually falls on a Tuesday, we are anticipating a lot more activity on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, leading up to the to the big 4th of July. So we will have extra units up patrolling each area, specifically in the east mountains and in the north and south valleys, of course. We are going to have our airboat out patrolling from noon to seven on the river. And that's not just for the activity that we're seeing in the river because of the large amount of water flow, but they can also fight fire from the river. They've got a pumping system and hose lines inside of the airboat that allows them to attack from the riverside, which has been really beneficial to us in the past. So again, we are in constant contact with our partners at the city, based on what we've been talking about tonight. We'll be taking care of the automatic aid areas, which we do every day for the city of Albuquerque, and they will in turn do the same for us on the automatic aid side for the unincorporated county. So happy to just report that we are ready and prepared for whatever may come on the 4th of July, and hoping that everybody does do the right thing and has a very safe and joyful 4th of July, and we have no big events. So I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chief, and you stay safe out there.
Will do.
Any questions for the chief?
Just thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, excellent. Item 11, announcements of the next commission meeting will be Tuesday, August 8, 2023, zoning meeting at 3:00 PM. And Tuesday, August 8, 2023, the administrative meeting at 5:00 PM here in the Kansas City Commission chambers. And this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for your patience.